Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, June 25th, 2018. All members are present. We had an executive session at 6:00 for informational purposes for discussing strategies with respect to litigation involving Wilmington Police Department. Okay? Pledge of will.
(inaudible)
Okay, we start off with the transmitting of Treasury warrants 50, 50A, 51, and 51A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? We have two sets of minutes. The first is June 6th, 2018, Wednesday. We'll take them up individually. Is there a motion to accept the Wednesday, June 6th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Errors, omissions, corrections? All in favor? And now we're on to June 11th, Board of Selectmen meeting. Your motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Any omissions, errors, corrections? All in favor? And we're at our first appointment for the evening. Terry Marsiello, the Director of the Elder Services, and Laura Pickett, the Case Manager with the Department of Elder Services.
Hi, first I'd like to be able to pass these out to you. This is our new, if you notice the label that is on the front of this water bottle, all better together, and it was actually a student. That, you're welcome, that made that logo for us for this year. That is our theme for 2018. And what better way than to start your walk with hydrating for the summer? And saying that for Better Together, I know these are small, these are the two finalists. There was over 25 students that participated in competition in making the label for us and helping us with our theme, Better Together. There was a number of things. So it ends up being the globe with hand in hand. That's actually pretty much what's on, on that. And then one of the students made up a beehive, a cone, Better Together.
There it goes.
And there it goes. Perfect time. We don't need that anymore. So I'll just put that aside. But that was actually, that all happened because of a teacher's enthusiasm to work with us. Her name is Jennifer Fidler, and she was from the Graphic Arts at the high school. And she made that possible because she had all her classes participate with us. Came over to the center, actually did a class at the center. So it was actually a lot of fun. And saying that, the goal for tonight is we want to get you updated as to what's happening at the center as in programming and things that are happening. But also with my, I'm very happy to say that Laura Pickett is here, my Case Manager, who will be able to give a little bit of what's going on for, as in our social service-type programming and some ideas that we have and certain things that she's been working on. First, I'd like to say first, some of the special events for our intergenerational-type programming. We worked, have been working with the North Intermediate School. Their CARE, oh, what is it called?
After-school cares program.
Their CAREs program, that's right, the after-school program. That's Margot Resnick. She actually was teaching her, the students after school how to do knitting. In conversation, it ends up that our knitting group, that consists of over 35 people, met with several of, 11 of those people, met with their knitting group, which was around, I would say, 12 students. They connected with one another. And I just wish the energy that was in that room, we had, one of our participants from our side said, you know, I've never crocheted and I, I can't learn. Well, that student heard that, changed her mind rather quickly, gave her homework to do, and that participant actually did it. And they have been, they're really attached right now. So that's been a wonderful program. We also have, Abundant Life came over for a breakfast. They're starting a program with us, coming over, having a little bit of a continental breakfast and doing some singing with us. In turn, a student, her first name is Abigail, approached me after that and now wants to play the piano for us, who was an eighth grader approaching, didn't have any teachers with her or anything, approached me and said, can we, I do, play the piano with you and can we do a sing-along? So that will be starting for the month of July. Then we also had Zachary Danciewicz, who is from Eagle Scout, and storage is a huge issue for the senior center. He redesigned the attic for us, and now we have wonderful storage. And it makes it a lot easier, and the staff is extremely appreciative on the talk also. Some of the programming that we're having is on tomorrow. We're having our special homebound meal, happens three times a year. For tomorrow's meal, it's to make sure that with all the excitement that's going on in town for the Fourth of July, to making sure that people that are homebound are also a part of it. So we do have, this, this time it's Panera, who was actually preparing sandwiches, a sandwich, a cookie, and, and chips. And so we have a group of 17 volunteers that are helping us deliver those meals for tomorrow. Then on the 26th, we're very happy to hear that Lou Samaglia was able to get that, the moving wall back to Wilmington, which is just so exciting. So we're trying to think of, in a way of having, you know, being a part of the community and making it, seeing if we can be, help be a part of that. And the way that we thought was on the opening night, which is July 26th, we will be having a spaghetti and meatball dinner. It'll be starting at 5:00. And we'd love, if you feel free, we'd love to have you come up, to be able to have a bite so that that can be completed by, so at 7:00 for the opening ceremony, we can be a part of that too, but to be able to get a bite before it begins. So that will be happening on July 26th. We also are very excited, we had a student, her first name is Amy, actually her last name is Den Fresco. She is actually from Bay Path University. She is going for her master's in occupational therapy. She is going to be teaching a five-series class course in the month of July to, about stress management, about dealing with that, working with a team approach. So that will be happening. Then we got a grant, a small grant, from the Massachusetts Council on Aging, a $300 grant from, and it's, it's called Go for Exercise. It's to promote exercise within the community. So on September 9th, it's a Sunday, it's from 1:00 to 3:00, it will be at the Yentile Farm, and it's grandparents' day. So what better day to promote exercise than on grandparents' day? Karen Campbell has been extremely helpful in making sure that I get that off the ground and doing the appropriate permits and all that kind of fun stuff. I've had an education, thank goodness for Karen. So that will be happening in September. So that's just a few things that will be happening and some of the intergenerational things. Of course, we have our regular yoga, zumba, those types of things that are happening. In preparing for this meeting today, I was kind of going over some of our numbers for my senior center, the computer program that we have, or people signing in. And believe it or not, in a year's time, it appears that there's a little, around 24% increase in activity at the senior center within a year's time. The reason I foresee that happening is that we are developing a few more, a few more We, as Laura will be sharing, there's a few other things that are happening, and then educational-type programs. But people, you know, we kind of keep pushing the fact it's so important that people feel comfortable coming to a place where they see their peers and just hang out, just an easy place to hang out. In saying that, we had found that we were having, our space was a little crunched, you might say. So we were kind of brainstorming as to what is the best way to kind of help this. One of the ideas that came up, I thought of, was the Fourth of July building. I know the Fourth of July building is used for a lot, for meetings in the evening, but during the day, it didn't really appear to be being used all that much. So we did approach a couple people on the Fourth of July Committee and spoke to them and got their permission, obviously along with the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager with their support, to be able to use that building on Thursday mornings for our art class. We've been doing that now for four months, I think it's been? Four, actually more. We started, actually, I can't tell you how many months right now, I'm so sorry. And the response has been wonderful. Obviously, for the month of June and July, we cannot use that building because of all the functions, but it's really been wonderful. And we kind of have a thought for the future as for that, for using another piece at a different time for that building too, which you'll be hearing about. Which leads me into introducing Laura. I don't know how many people have had the great opportunity of meeting Laura. Believe it or not, she is going to be, as of August, in our department for seven years. She is a person that has, does an awful lot of work, but you have more behind the scenes, more with the people in the community, in their homes, and has been extremely active. But without saying any much more, I want her to share about certain programs that she's been working on that I think you might find extremely interesting.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening. As Case Manager, I'm out in the community a lot, trying to help our seniors and assess what their needs are. And just like the rest of the country, our seniors here in Wilmington are experiencing a lot of issues related to Alzheimer's and dementia. So just to kind of give, just a few statistics on what we're, what we're looking at. Some stats, 5.7 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's right now. One in 10 people over the age of 65 has, has Alzheimer's. And of the, another statistic is about one in three caregivers is aged 65 or older. So that kind of gives you an idea of what some of our elders are facing out in the community. So about three years ago, after speaking with Terry, after what we were kind of finding out in the community, we, we worked with Minuteman Senior Services to have a six-week program, workshop that they provided called Powerful Tools for Caregivers. We were able to have that at the center. And that six-week program gave caregivers concrete skills that they could use while they're caring for their loved one. But it also provided them with some support that they really felt that they needed. At the end of that six weeks, after talking with Terry, again, we decided, thought that it would be helpful to offer a caregiver support group. So we have been doing that for the past about two and a half years now. Meets on the third Monday of the month from 10 to, I mean, from 10:30 to 12:00 on those Mondays. And we have, average between eight and 12 participants every month, which is a pretty fair amount for, for that type of program. In February of this year, I collaborated with Lori Hayes from the Parish of the Transfiguration, which sponsored the Alzheimer's Association, the Basics of Alzheimer's. Forty-five people attended that program. After the program was over, Lori and I kind of felt that the participants needed something else after that, that they needed another program to follow up on services. So in May of this year, we provided, we've sponsored another program to give them those concrete answers. And in that program, 33 people attended. So I think that is, again, significant of some of the issues that people are facing out there. Some of those people now are now active participants of our caregiver support group, which is wonderful to see. So over, over the past year or so, Terry and I have been talking about developing a program called the Memory Cafe. We've met with some towns around us that have already implemented this program to see how to best go about launching a successful program here. So many of you might not know what a Memory Cafe is. A Memory Cafe provides a welcoming space for people with memory loss and those who care for them to attend together. The cafe offers an opportunity to socialize, participate in activity, and to make new friends in an accepting environment. A lot of times, people that are experiencing dementia or Alzheimer's, their caregivers might be reluctant to bring them out because of certain behaviors. In a Memory Cafe, everyone knows what those behaviors are, and it's a very accepting and welcoming event for them. So one of our members of our caregiver support group said to me, kind of summed up what I wanted to, you know, share with you, or the reason why a Memory Cafe is so, so important. She, and I'm going to quote her, "I can't, I can get someone to come in and stay with my husband so I can run an errand or go have dinner with a friend, but what I really want, what I really want is to be able to do things with my husband." We're hoping that this Memory Cafe will provide just that service for, for those folks.
To express a little bit further on that Memory Cafe, a year ago, a year ago August, I did apply for a grant. It was through the state, one of the state programs. And I'm sorry to say, we didn't get that grant. But in making that, this is a monthly program where you can't just go month to month, you have to make this a very structured for a year, like a six-month to a year, knowing exactly what you're doing at the event that you're doing, what musician you might be having coming in, or what restaurant you might try. You know, it's working also with businesses in the community. And so in saying that, that's why we were trying to juggle around as to seeing how other ways we could possibly do this. And you know what? It's to the point where no more fooling around about trying to figure this out, let's just do it. Let's just see how it works. Who says, you know, the money may be the issue as to, as to food. In the process of working with a couple of organizations and speaking to them about it, we actually have someone that's in the back burner right now, trying to, trying to see if they can make some things happen for us as to, and we'll be finding out next week, as to possibly sponsoring several other things that will be occurring. This is really exciting. We got a taste of what it means to some people as to what, remember when we had the kayak program? We went out kayaking. And a thing that I'll never forget is one of the days that we were out there, and it was a husband and wife, and the wife was out, and we all made it out, finally out to the water, and we're paddling around, and the wife started to get a little choked up. And we were like, you know, your husband's okay, everything's fine? And she's like, no, this is so wonderful. This is like a date. It's like we're going out and getting to enjoy something that we can both enjoy together. So in saying that, that really kind of made, that's the type of program that the Memory Cafe is. The goal for the state of Massachusetts right now, which the governor has, did sign, I think, oh, three months ago, is making it for age-friendly. This is one step further for making us age-friendly, bringing in education across the, for Wilmington to have a better understanding as to this disease and stuff. So we are in the beginning process, we're kind of like in the bottom part of doing it, but we're going to make it happen. And I think as the, the programs that Laura has been running, I mean, for those amount of numbers to come out, because remember, they're coming out and they're still caring for their loved one. The fact that they can come out to do these things is wonderful. So that's just a little taste as to, as to what's going on at the center. And you know, I want to make sure that you feel free to pop in at any time. For any of the things that I know you get our newsletter, pop into them. I have no problem with that at all. People might question saying, why they're here, oh my gosh, what's going on, are we in trouble? No. But you are more than welcome to join in on anything and, and feel free to ask, ask anything when you do. So thank you so much for having us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Amazing programs that you're having over there. I can't believe 24% increase, huh, over the past year alone?
Yes. So I kept looking at it going, oh man, I gotta look at this again, but yeah. And we're getting younger, younger people involved.
Yeah, it's a wonderful program that you're starting with the Memory Cafe, and I know Alzheimer's is just a terrible disease that afflicts the whole family, so kudos, congratulations on everything you're doing on behalf of the town. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I'd just say, no, if my other gig doesn't work, I'll be there in a couple of years anyway. But anyway, no, you folks do an outstanding job, and it's really nice to hear all these new programs. And we hear all the wonderful things that you do, Terry, and also your Case Manager, which she does, and it really means a lot to the community. So, you know, it's something for folks to plan to, plan for in the future when they get a little bit older and they get to those golden ages and, and they want to see what's happening and, and meet friends. And that's what it's all about. Just want to say thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Ladies, thanks so much for the update. I can't say that I'm surprised by the 24% increase because, you know, based on my observations, you guys are always looking for new innovative ways to provide service to our community, and you guys are just keep, the place is so vibrant over there, and so it's no wonder why you're keeping everybody so young with all the offerings that you have. So really appreciate that, and I really appreciate the fact that you guys don't just accept the status quo, you're constantly looking for ways to improve, you're constantly involving the youth of our community, partnering with them, and I just think that's so important. So we really appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming in. Ms. Pickett, it's nice to actually put a face. I know Ms. Marsiello's been singing your praises for quite some time. Great job, as always, Ms. Marsiello. I am continually impressed with how you continue to grow the program or the catalog of programs that you offer and increase participation and engagement with the community. I think that you and your staff do a wonderful job with limited space. So thank you very, very much for what you do, the service you provide to the people in this community, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you both, Terry and Laura, for everything that you both do for this community. It's amazing how you come up with creative ideas to keep the people older than me engaged. I have, my mother-in-law lives with us, and she's constantly getting updates from the senior center on different things, and I know she's tried a couple of them. So I really appreciate that on a personal side, but everything that you guys do is just tremendous, and keep up the good work. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for your support.
Thank you.
You know, certainly Terry's department is, for many years, has been, you know, inviting environment, you know, and Terry's a master at coming up with different ways to make the environment over there inviting and friendly, as was mentioned, despite of the space constraints and some of the limitations over there, Terry and her staff, and certainly Laura and, and the others there, continue to do great things. One of the things that I think is particularly noteworthy is the constant efforts at working interdepartmentally. So whether it's working with the library, Tina Stewart, with Karen Campbell, or with the schools, there's a constant desire to seek out new ways to work with other departments. Also, the police department, fire department, I don't know that there's a department that Elder Services doesn't touch, so it's a real credit to Terry and her staff.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have a great Fourth of July.
You too. Our 7:20 appointment, we're about five minutes behind, is with Chief, Police Chief Begonas and Deputy Chief Kavanaugh tonight. It's regards to the North Wilmington rail crossing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. I brought the eye candy with me so that you could...
Definitely.
All right.
So we had an issue with the North Wilmington rail crossing recently, and the Town Manager thought having you here to bring us up to date on what's taking place over there.
Sure. Well, thank you for having us here. Yes, we've had an ongoing issue with the North Wilmington crossing. Over the years, we've had multiple meetings and discussions with the various operators for the MBTA, as well as representatives from Mass Department of Transportation regarding the operations of that, of that station. It is a very small station. There is some site distance issues relative to the building that sits right next to it as you're coming, heading northbound on the rail. One of the major issues we've had over the past years and have resolved it on multiple occasions is that when the northbound train comes in, a lot of times if they stop at the first car at the platform, it'll leave four cars across Route 62, and the concerns of emergency responders in towns is that, you know, we can't get across that while that train is in the depot. Usually, an average stop runs about between a minute, minute and a half, possibly up to two minutes. But you can understand that that's a, a critical concern of us if there's a major incident on the other side of that crossing that we need to get to. So last Monday, we had a situation where we were responding, and the fire ambulance was the first to the, to the depot. As they were approaching, the red light started flashing, the crossharms came down, and the train entered the, entered the station. Ordinarily, I guess it would be, you know, just, you know, a little bit of common sense to pull in and through, to allow the apparatus to get through. It held up a couple pieces of fire apparatus, as well as responding police officers to the call for service, which is in an area of town off of Salem Street between the railroad tracks and Cunningham. Makes it difficult for the fire apparatus to get there because they have to go all the way up 62, down Middlesex, pick up Salem, and come back down that way. Ordinarily, we log these things. We have two, relatively, a two-year history that provided to Mass DOT. I was a little perplexed on Monday about the delay, why the engineer had stopped there. So we engaged Mass DOT. We ended up speaking with the individual who is the Chief Operating Officer for the railroad of the Mass, Mass DOT, and he's been very helpful. We've had an open dialogue. We plan on having a meeting to discuss protocols going forward. I don't know if you've ever been up there on the platform, but if you look up North Wilmington, there's several number cards that run down. Those are car stops, basically. It counts the amount of cars, and if you stop the engine at that location, how many cars would, would, so if you stopped number four, you'd have four cars and not block the intersection. That's a clearly established protocol that we've had, it's in their book. The issue is turnover at the MBTA. Individuals that work for Keolis don't always work that route, so it's inconsistent at best. When we do observe it, we do call, we do make them aware of the issue, competing interests, they have commuters to get where they need to go, and we need to serve the public. So it's been a source of frustration for us. I think that we had, you know, a serious call for service that we would have hoped to have been able to get there earlier to. That said, you know, was able to open up a dialogue with the state, get to somebody high-ranking in, in the Mass DOT that's going to oversee this. So I don't think we can get any higher ranking when it comes to rails than Ryan Cullahan. He's, he's the top dog. He's in charge of the entire thing and oversees Keolis as well. So we'll be meeting, we'll be looking at the station. There is some improvements planned for that relative to where those car cards go, the card signs, to, to expand those, because when they were put in years ago, the cars were smaller. Now each of these cars is bigger, they want to be able to expand that. They're having some permitting problems with getting that done right now, just with communicating with folks that run the fiber up the rail line. So DigSafe has to be able to communicate with them, be able to locate where the fiber optic is before they can show a permit. So I guess that's the holdup there, but it seems that Ryan is working on that for us now to make sure that that's expedited.
So it's in process?
It's in process.
And what do you anticipate the meeting, Chief?
I would hope within the next week or two. Right now, the cars are traveling in and through the, in and through the platform so that we do have that ability to get across if we have to. But we've had that before, and that's our concern. We want to make sure that they hear us loud and clear and that we don't have to revisit this again. It seems every three or four years, we're going through the same circumstance. I mean, that platform needs a lot to be desired. If you've been up there recently, it really is deteriorating. It's, it's, you know, there's a lot of trash up there, which we'll talk to the rail folks about to try to clean it up and, and just make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, I guess, so to speak. There's some corrosion to the platform and the, and the service on up in there. So it's really not conducive to folks coming and going with luggage and things like that. It's really kind of beat up. So in the process, we'll work on that as well to try to see if we can get some attention paid to that stop.
Thank you. Deputy Chief, anything to add or...
No. Like I said, we had had a discussion between myself, Chief Minuteman... No. Like I said, we had had a discussion between myself, Chief Man, who apologized couldn't be here tonight, and Chief Begonis, Deputy Richter. And like you said, it's been worked on quite a few times and just gave him the info that we were able to get out of dispatch and he's been able to work and get to the person we need to talk to, so.
Thank you both for being here. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, I heard from a neighbor the other day that since this incident happened, we were talking about it. He was at Eli's yesterday and the train pulled up, but not far enough where the gates were still down. That has to be addressed too. Since I've been on this board, I've talked to Mr. Hull several times, that I've witnessed the train not stopping. And it seems to be just going north towards Havel. I don't recollect one going south and stopping. It's always heading out of the city towards the north. So maybe that's something that we can talk to them about, but I'm concerned greatly about this subject. I live on that side of town, not far from the incident that just recently had. So it's a subject that I'm near to dare to. So, and Jeff knows, I've talked to him several times about it, and I know that you've, you mentioned the two deputy chiefs and you chief have worked your tails off along with Jeff and other people in town to get them to stop. But I don't care if it's turnover or not, it has to stop. Lives matter. That's all I care about. So thank you for addressing the situation, being here tonight, and I can't wait to see the report on that, on that meeting to see what the outcome is.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Just say real quick, I appreciate you folks out being here, obviously. And obviously, you made a priority number one. So you're talking to the big guy at DOT to really try to take care of this because it seems like it's happened a few times, you know, and I appreciate you on top of that.
Senator, the town's office was extremely helpful getting us connected immediately because if you've ever tried to get ahold of Keolis or somebody in the ranks there, it's virtually impossible sometimes. It's, you know, you don't, you don't go up high enough the ladder. And I think that that was a decision we made. We're going to go as high as we possibly can with this to make sure that they hear us clearly that this is not acceptable. And there has to be some protocols that are followed. The protocols are established. They're just, you know, depends on the engineer whether they, whether they follow them or not. Railroad law is a difficult and ambiguous, I think you can say ambiguous thing, but it's kind of a freewheeling thing as far as the railroad goes. You don't have a lot of say in it, so we'll certainly advocate for our position from Wilmington. But they're, you know, they're pretty powerful group, the folks in the railroad. So it's, railroad law is, you know, it's not designed with us in mind. It's designed with the railroad in mind. So we'll work it out and they appear amenable to have the conversation and try to come to some type of compromise. They understand common sense, Trump's procedure and law, so in a lot of ways.
Mr. Ben.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. I have two questions. The first one is, I'm not familiar, so maybe you can, you might know, you may not, but hopefully we can find out from the folks at DOT. Oftentimes, when I'm driving in my car, I come to an intersection, say the 62 bridge, I know if that light is flashing at the top that there's an emergency personnel that's going to be coming. I need to either pull to the side or just be aware that they're coming through. Is there something like that in place that lets the train operator know that perhaps that the, that an ambulance or a fire truck is coming? That they, is there a flashing light? Could there be a flash? Is that something we could have conversations with?
You know, some type of opticon system so they can see it ahead of time. The difficulty with this is, is everything was, everything came together at the perfect storm. I think that the engineer could have made a judgment called to pull forward of the platform just to alleviate that. But the discussion was that they had an elderly passenger with luggage that wanted to get off. They didn't want them to walk through four cars to get back. So they figured they'd just have that individual get off there and then move through. So the total stop took about a little over a minute and a half, which is about average for those stops. That, you know, midday, you really don't have a lot of people coming and going on that. In the morning, the commuter, in the evening, the commuters, you know, it's a lot more frequent and the stops take a little, a little bit longer, but we're hoping to resolve that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we all know that minute and a half can be critical for somebody. So I just wonder if in the conversations with DOT, if that's a possibility, if there's such technology out there, something to let the conductor know that we've got emergency personnel coming through. I guess it's worth asking the question. My second question is if we can do anything to support you in terms of drafting a letter to the DOT, you know, from this board and letting them know how critical we think this is, how important this issue is. And we, we're, I think, I don't want to speak for everybody up here, but I would assume that we want to make sure that we can do whatever we can to assist you in the conversations that you have so we can prevent like, something like this happen in the future.
I thank you for your support. Hopefully, we can send a letter of thanks that the issue is resolved and its protocol has been adhered to. So we'll start with the meeting and see where it goes from there. Mr. Cullen is a, is a good guy so far. He's, he's been very responsive and he's, you know, promised me that he will get to the bottom of it. So we have his assurances. We'll see how that goes.
I appreciate both your attention on this.
Thank you.
Well, all set? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, folks.
First under communications is correspondence from Margaret McKenna, trustee, with regard to a Irene M. Brennan Family Trust. And I'll just read this into the record and close herein. Please find a check in the amount of $53,171.96 payable to the Town of Wilmington Scholarship Fund. At the time of her death, Irene M. Brennan, a beloved schoolteacher and familiar figure to anyone who has been in Wilmington for any amount of time, left a portion of her estate, which was held in the Irene M. Brennan Family Trust, to the Town of Wilmington Scholarship Fund. That portion amounts to $53,171.96, and I am pleased as the current trustee of the Irene M. Brennan Family Trust to donate these funds for the future use of Wilmington students pursuing their education at Salem State University. Please note it was Ms. Brennan's wish that two $1,000 scholarships be awarded annually to Wilmington residents attending Salem State University. It is Ms. Brennan's preference these funds be first given to any student pursuing a degree at Salem State University in the field of education. However, in any given year, if you are not able to identify two Wilmington students attending Salem State University to pursue their degrees in the field of education, I would ask that the particular scholarship funds for that year be given to a student attending Salem State University regardless of their chosen major. It would give Irene Brennan great pleasure to know that a portion of her estate was being used for such a worthy purpose. I would ask that these scholarships be made to the Irene M. Brennan Memorial Scholarship Fund in that they be distributed on an annual basis as requested above. I thank you for your immediate attention to the above referenced matter. I am forever grateful that my auntie E.I. has chosen to leave such a lasting legacy to the community and to the students that she so dearly loved. So those funds have been deposited into the town's trust account. And as you know, there's a Wilmington Scholarship Fund. There are five members that serve on that committee and they vote every year as to how funds should be distributed. Next is a letter from Margaret Hurley, who is the Assistant Attorney General. And she is responding to the special town meeting, December 16th, 2017, special town meeting with regard to the article that revised the zoning with respect to detox centers. And essentially, the, it's a fairly lengthy response. The AG's office did approve the article as proposed. I would note that the Assistant Attorney General goes to particular pains, if you will, to caution the town about exercising this article recommends, highly recommends several different places throughout this correspondence, that the town consult with counsel, raises some concerns about potential discrimination claims that could ensue if the article is not adhered to in a, in appropriate manner. I would note in one particular case, she states, "A response to the community pressures may support a finding that discriminatory animus motivated a defendant in the enforcement of regulations or regulation efforts." So I guess essentially it is approved, but there needs to be a level of caution. And so the town clerk will be posting this notice, which is required before it becomes effective. Next, we have the notice from the school committee chair, Julie Bressard, about the resignation from the school committee of Margaret Kane. I'll first read her letter into the record. "Due to recent events in my life, I find it necessary to relinquish, relinquish my position on the Wilmington School Committee effective June 13, 2018. My time on the school committee has been truly gratifying. I enjoy being part of the education of Wilmington children." Ms. Bressard notes at the June 13, 2018 Wilmington School Committee meeting, "School Committee member Margaret Kane submitted her letter of resignation. Please advise the school committee on the appropriate steps to appoint a replacement." We have later on the agenda on the board to consider discussion about that process. Also, while we're in the retirement mode, this memo is from Michael Morris, the town accountant. Wish to advise, this is directed to both myself and the Board of Selectmen, Kevin Kyra, Chair. Wish to advise you that I expect to retire July 12, 2019. The date may slightly be extended as I plan to confirm that all fiscal year 2019 year-end warrants are properly posted to the correct fiscal year. I would be further available for any fine tuning of the year end as needed. And he goes on to just note that it's been a pleasure serving the Town of Wilmington for over 30 years, but I will have reached the maximum amount for retirement. It is time to move on to the quote, "retirement world." I'll be available for any, to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say, I was serving on the board when he was employed with the town. And Mike Morris is a fantastic human being. He's been our town accountant since the eighties. He does a great job. He's going to be deeply missed. He's a good man. Thank you.
If I can add to that portion, Mr. Hull, that you did not read is that he's eligible for a certain amount of compensation for the final year. If his date gets extended for a week, you would expect that the additional amount not be included in his compensation. He's a pretty selfless guy. He's a pro's pro. He's, as Mr. McCoy stated, he is dedicated an awful lot of time and he's a very intelligent individual. I had the pleasure of getting to know him pretty well when I was on the finance committee. And it's going to be a significant task to fill issues. So, Mr. Morris, thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would certainly second that. And just generally speaking, these types of positions, finance-related positions, treasurer collectors, town accountants, I guess for any number of reasons, it's becoming more and more of a challenge to fill these positions. You know, I think, and in fact, D. Casey, our assistant town manager, serves on a state-appointed committee where they're trying to identify ways to facilitate more of a farm system, if you will, for people in the municipal sector in many of these key spots. So it's, it's going to be, we will certainly be looking to begin that process of transition in the fall with the recruitment process and where the board will be. The appointing authority will have further discussions about it. But, you know, and aside from all that, clearly, Mike has been a real trooper through the last 30-plus years, 30-plus budgets behind him. So it's going to be tough to see him leave. Next, we have the letters of appointment and reappointment to the finance committee. So we have three individuals who were reappointed to serve on the finance committee. Their terms had expired at the conclusion of the annual town meeting. Kevin Stokes, Michelle Kincaid, and Bernard Nelly. Their terms now run through 2021. Then there was one vacant position, filling Selectman Eaton's, the position that he formerly occupied. And that appointment was made to Varak Shah. I would note that the appointing group, appointing committee is a three-member committee. It's established in our bylaws and it is made up of the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, the Chair of the Finance Committee, and the Town Moderator. So they met last week to consider applicants and make those appointments.
Are you going to have letters going out to the other applicants?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Okay.
Next is a memo to the board, just informing the board of the quarterly meeting that took place at the Worcester City Hall with regard to the Analog Devices pursuit of a tax increment financing plan. The Economic Assistance Coordinating Council did in fact meet last week. I attended the meeting along with representatives from Analog and Peter Milano from the Office of Business Development. And the application was approved, which is certainly good news for both the town and Analog. I would expect to be getting the formal TIF resolution within the next couple of weeks. And there'll be some announcement of groundbreaking ceremonies coming up. Also, on that same issue, I just wanted to make note of a letter of support that was submitted to the EACC by State Senator Bruce Tar. I won't read the letter, but it talks about the various strong points associated with this proposal and the prospect of jobs and additional headquarters being located here in Wilmington. We have correspondence from the MBTA reminding people about the, that the weekend schedules beginning July 7th through December 28th, there will be no train service at the Lowell, on the Lowell branch. They're doing some repairs to the line. They will have shuttle service and they provide a contact. Individuals that are interested in getting further details can go to the MBTA.com backslash Lowell for more information. I would note that the exception to that exclusion, the July 28th and 29th, they will have service. Next, under correspondence is a letter from the Wilmington Environmental Restoration Committee to the board. And I will read this into the record. As you may be aware, the Wilmington Environmental Restoration Committee was formed as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit to administer a technical assistance grant under the EPA Superfund Program relative to the Olend Chemical Site. We also recently received a technical assistance grant to aid the community to better understand and respond to the impacts of the proposed New England Transrail Project in regards to the environmental impact statement that is required for the Olend Site by the Surface Transportation Board and how that all pertains to the National Environmental Policy Act. Work has spent a magnitude of volunteer time regarding the Olend Site resulting in thousands of hours reviewing technical filings in meetings and corresponding with the EPA and our consultants. We have a talented core group in our technical committee and they work hard to protect the interests of the town regarding these extremely important issues and have represented the town's interests well. Work collaborated with the local town government, the state DEP, the federal EPA, and the town's environmental consultants, the residents, the late... environmental consultants, the residents, the late State Representative Jim Moselli, our federal delegation Senators Markey and Warren, the city of Woburn residents, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health relative to childhood cancer study, and town council. Purposes of this letter is to make you aware of how important continuing with the same environmental attorney is at this time to support the work we and others are doing to promote the best interests of the town. We have hit several milestones that have taken 12 years to get to in the EPA Superfund assessment process regarding the Olin site. 20 years, 12 years. Many members of work have been involved in the site for over 20 years when it was under the state jurisdiction. It's a very complicated site and situation. There are multiple layers of environmental regulations and complexities. For anyone, anyone to state that someone could quote, "get up to speed in a few days" end quote, on this site demonstrates a clear lack of understanding of the site and the underlying threats and impacts this site can and has had on the town. It has been so positive and a comfort knowing that when critical legal and technical issues involving Olin and/or Transrail have arisen, we have had Dan Deutsch to represent the town's interests. Mr. Deutsch has been an important cog in the wheel over time to stop the trash transfer station. His comments were excellent and showcased his knowledge of the, this area of limited understanding in most firms. He is well-known and well-respected in his field, and his professionalism goes without question. We strongly, we feel strongly that the town needs Mr. Deutsch's experience and knowledge even more so now than ever as the Superfund process moves from site characterization towards actual remediation. One small overlooked item or issue could mean the difference in the grand scheme of so many regulatory issues. Olin could file a paperwork any day for a waiver to clean up the site with the head of EPA. New England Transrail could go, could be on the front burner any day since the EIS is likely close to completion, if not complete. The town manager can attest that these things are scheduled and could come up at any time. This is not the time to fix something that is not broken and to be in a weakened position. We respectfully ask the Board of Selectmen not to change council at this time to support our work and not risk all the efforts to date that work and others have accomplished. The Olin NET issues are of such importance, we hope that the Board of Selectmen can come to some level of understanding and work things out with council to avoid leaving the town in an extremely vulnerable position. We have a good environmental attorney, one of the best. Why have a change of the guard, changing of the guard, especially now? Sincerely, Martha K. Stewart, President Wilmington Environmental Restoration Committee; Suzanne M. Sullivan, Vice President Wilmington Environmental Restoration Committee.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a quick comment? This letter, and I know we're going to be talking about a town council later on the agenda, but this letter does speak volumes. It really does. I just want people to see that. I'm sure we all know that. Olin, New England Transrail is a serious issue that we've been dealing with over three decades, and I'm sure we're going to be dealing with it again and again. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just one thing. You meant, you said Martha K. Stewart. And you were thinking of the person who does the shows, but it's Stevenson.
Probably because she had her money.
Yeah.
I wish I did.
Next on the correspondence is a notice from Verizon with regard to changes in fees. Files Local TV Service will increase from $12.99 to $25 per month. It's a hefty increase. And BHR4 router rentals will increase from 10 to 12 per month. They talk about the rental rates for set-top boxes. Those are also increasing. This information will be provided to current subscribers, and individuals with any questions can access Files TV channel lineup 24/7 at Verizon.com backslash Files TV Channels.
I was surprised at the increase on these. I mean, we have no say as to...
No, no, no. The board has no say over the fees or offerings.
That's it for communications?
Yes.
On the board to consider.
First under board to consider is a request for a neighborhood block party. This is for a portion of Lukiah Circle. It's actually two particular, it's for a section between 15 Lukiah and 18 Lukiah. The date is August 11 from noon until 10:00 PM. There is no rain date. This, I believe, is the third year that they have held this. There's a map attached to the correspondence for the board's information. You'll see that residents in other portions or on other portions of the street have access, alternative access out of the, that area if they so choose. Have, would not had any issues in the past, and I see no reason why the board could not grant this.
Will you grant the request?
Second.
Is the motion and a second? Any discussion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Next is a request of Jessica Weaver for the Board of Selectmen to grant a waiver, an exemption to a section of the Conflict of Interest Law. Ms. Weaver was recently hired this past year as an educational assistant in the school department. She has also been for a number of years working as a summer lifeguard at the beach. We are clearly in, it seems like every year we struggle to get lifeguards. This year is particularly difficult. But one of the requirements that she has, because she is employed in two different capacities, is to seek an exemption from, that would be issued by the Board of Selectmen to allow her to work in this capacity as lifeguard. I've run this by town council. He does not see any issues with the board granting this. Essentially, there are certain requirements that she has to meet. The first being that the services provided, this being the lifeguard services are out of the normal working hours as a town employee, which clearly they are. The services cannot be required as part of the town employee's regular duties, the regular duties being an educational assistant, so meets that requirement. And the head of the contracting agency, in this case, the rec department, makes and files with the town clerk written certification that no employee of that agency is available to perform these services. Clearly, again, the rec department is really challenged, particularly this year, to get lifeguards. So what I would recommend is that the board authorize this exemption, and I would suggest the board approve the exemption to Section 20 of the Conflict of Interest Law for Ms. Jessica Weaver to work as a lifeguard for the Wilmington Recreation Department and its summer beach program for the duration of the program scheduled to end August 12, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Somewhat.
Motion by Mr. Loud, segment by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? Just one, one thing to bring up, and I think I had mentioned it to you, is to, may want to contact the Middlesex Retirement Board to see how they're going to handle this for her.
Yes. Yeah, I did check with our payroll person. We've had other instances, similar instances apparently, where employees have worked in a part-time capacity for rec and they, or another department. They've typically been placed on the, in, on OBRa?
In OBRa.
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay, yes.
If I may, just, I want to chime in here again, just to take a worse bear repeating here, and I know it's become a problem for the rec department, but if anybody knows somebody who's looking for a summer job, we really need lifeguards at Silver Lake. So if you know somebody, please have them contact Karen Campbell at the rec department. Thank you.
We'll take a vote. All those in favor? I'm unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, if you can just sign that and be out of the board. Next is a request by Samantha Rafe, who is our Health and Recovery Coordinator, Wilmington Police Department, and this is a request to use the town common on September 17 from 10:00 PM, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM to host a vigil. You'll recall that this was done last year in October. The plan is to do it this year in September, and part of the intent there is to recognize National Recovery Month as being in September. She's also seeking the board's authorization to light the common purple, if you will, again in recognition of National Recovery Month, and then requesting that authorization to place signs on town property around town, just making people aware of this event. I would note that Samantha is in the audience this evening if any board members have any questions or...
Samantha, would you like to say something? It's up to you on this.
Um, I need to.
Okay.
Just requesting it to change from October to September. So the new National Recovery Month came through some mental health awareness and events. I'm really trying to kind of pull some things together that month, so that's really the purpose of moving it from October to September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'm in motion. Second.
Segment by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Next under our board to consider is the process to fill the school committee vacancy that was noted earlier via the correspondence from Ms. Bressard. What I would suggest, and we've had conversations with the chairman of the board about a potential process. We talked about some dates to have a joint meeting with the school committee. The process is laid out in Chapter 41, Section 11. It requires that the remaining members of the school committee meet with the Board of Selectmen to ultimately make a, an appointment for the unexpired term. So in this case, Ms. Kane's term is, would be up in 2019. The school department, in talking with Paul Roggerio, his staff was able to reach out to the remaining members, uphold them in terms of their availability. They would be available for a meeting on August 13, which, as you know, is the next selectmen's meeting. And so it's, I guess the process I would suggest, if the board wishes to go this route, is that the board could announce that you are receiving letters of interest in the vacant position through the close of business on July 27, which is a Friday. The applications, letters of interest, would come into the manager's office, and then we would in turn distribute those letters to the Board of Selectmen, the school committee. That would give each group a couple of weeks prior to the meeting of the 13th if you wanted to have individual conversations with any of these candidates, and then have your meeting on the 13th as a regular part of the business of the board, and take a vote at that time. I would note that the, so there'll be 11 members, five on the Board of Selectmen, six on the school committee. The successful candidate, so to speak, would require a straight majority, or six of the 11, to vote in their favor.
That sounds like a, sounds like a plan. I did talk to Chair of the School Committee, Julie Bressard, and the town manager, how over this, and it was our understanding that August 13 worked best. There were a few people from the school committee that would not be available for July 9, which is our next meeting. So if that works well with everybody here, we'll have our joint meeting on the 13th of August. We'll get information out to the community so that they can put in for that position up until Friday, July 27. Okay. Okay, so why don't we take a motion on that procedure? That's how we're going to do it, and we'll have the joint meeting on the 13th with the procedure to follow as mentioned by our town manager. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
Next on the agenda for the board to consider is the reappointment, town manager's reappointment and contract renewal.
Okay, on that, I'm going to appoint Selectman Loud and Selectman Eaton as a subcommittee to begin to review and investigate the contract. But prior to that, I would like to have an executive meeting with the board members on July 9. If, I don't believe we have anything for an executive meeting for that timeframe, right?
There was potentially something, but yeah.
So that, that may change. We may have to have a separate executive meeting. So before the process begins, I'm going to call for an executive meeting with the, with the members of the Board of Selectmen.
Next under board to consider is the appointment of town and labor council services.
Mr. Chairman, I know we're going to make an appointment, but I would like to take a few minutes of the board's time, if I could.
Sure. I think everybody's going to have an opportunity to speak.
Oh, yeah. Well, then that's good. I don't know if you're going to rush in for a vote, then I can, I'll wait and take my turn.
No.
No.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Now, I just want to, I just want to make reference to a few points. I received the town manager's memo dated June 22, 2018, and one has to deal with the money, one has to deal relative to references. And I'm taking a look at it, and I see under our present town council, Brooks and Durendis, and feel free to join in. I'm looking at all the department heads, and I see that they've talked about Brooks and Durendis, all favorable. I don't see any negativity at all. In fact, I see the town manager made a compliment. My experience working with Lou Ross and Dan Deutsch have been very favorable. I have found both to be responsive and highly competent. My direct interaction with Kim Salat have been less frequent, but I've also considered her with a high ability of competence. I just take a look at this, and Sharon George spoke highly of them. All the department heads had wonderful things to say. I, I just take a look at another law firm, which I think's in the running, obviously, is KP Law. And one, evidently, the manager must have reached out to a manager and talked about, they were satisfied, but they noted he was very less impressed with their services in the community he worked prior to his current job. Talked to another manager. He started talking somewhat favorable, but he wanted to mention that. He also noted at times, when dealing with general counsel matters, it could be frustrating navigating through the attorneys at the firm, as there was not one point of contact. And I know we talked about having somebody at the home office to be a point of contact, and I believe Mr. Durendis said Lou Ross would be, say, the town council. I mean, obviously, I'd like to talk a little more, but I just wanted to bring up these few points. And I just take a look, I take a look at the seriousness of what we're doing here, and I know some of the gentlemen, they've been on for a couple of years, and I respect everyone's opinion, and I know they serve the community. everyone's opinion, and I know they serve the community. But you really need to take a look at the history of the past 15 years of Town Counsel and what they provided to the community. And they've given us outstanding services. I think in the front burner, then one of the most important things is Olin Chemical and New England Transrail. That's been around for three decades. That's something that we're going to have to deal with. And Dan Deutsch is one of the best in the state, if not one of the better environmental lawyers in the country when it comes to environmental law. He knows his stuff. He's been around, everything's been favorable. I mean, these are something that we really need to take a concern, because we're still testing water. We want to make sure that, you know, they do their job. They need to clean it up. They shouldn't get any waivers, they need to clean it. I mean, they knocked out five of our nine wells, one of our greatest natural resources. And when it comes to the, you know, I just want to make a few points. And I'm glad that we're able to talk. I'd like to talk a little bit more about this, if I could, Mr. Chairman. But, no, these are just a few points that I'd like to bring forward in dealing with this. Because I know, as member of the Board of Selectmen, our three biggest appointments are the Town Manager, Town Accountant, and Town Counsel. We want to make sure we're covered, you know? And I would like to have an opportunity to speak a little bit more about this than right now, you know, yield to anybody else.
Looks like we're going to have the hat trick this year, too, it seems like. Just for, for the people in the audience of what Mr. McCoy was talking about, he mentioned all the department heads, and that's not really true. There was only three referenced out of all the department heads. There were several that I talked to who was not, gave their displeasure towards the Durensis group. So I just want that to be cleared. And also, under KP, what was neglected to say was that the one manager said he was very satisfied, and the other manager said he was very pleased. So we want you to hear both, both sides of it. Okay, Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly just want to take a few moments, if I can, and just walk folks through my thought process here. Obviously, Mr. McCoy mentioned that this is obviously a very big decision. Having been on the board here for two years, this is probably one of the bigger decisions that I've had to make. So with that, I just wanted to walk folks through my process. In addition to taking a close look at the resumes, obviously reviewing the interviews that we sat through and checking up on some references, I also took into account the recommendations of the screening committee. I, too, actually reached out personally to six current department heads, in addition to what we were provided to in the memo. Spoke to them, because they're on the front lines. They actually speak with Town Counsel more often than, say, we would. They're dealing with them on a daily, weekly basis. So I relied on their input. I also talked to the manager and the assistant Town Manager. The manager was kind enough to provide us with a financial breakdown when considering the finances of this decision. And so I appreciate both of the, the input from both of you. I also reached out to, as Mr. McCoy mentioned, I'm new to this, so we also, I also got input from six former Selectmen who had been up here in the past. And so I appreciate the input from six past members of this board. I also wanted to just point out that I was very impressed with all five. And there's no question that these are five impressive firms that are probably all very capable of this job. And so I appreciate them coming in and their interest to work with the Town of Wilmington. But based on all the information and the interviews that I sat through, I found myself to be very impressed with a number of the firms. And through my research, not only with the department heads and the members of the Town Administration, but reaching out to other communities, I've found that it's not very uncommon for communities to have not only a council, but a separate labor council. That's actually more common, I found in my research, than it is not. And then also, not, it's not uncommon to retain somebody for a particular issue. And so what I would like to see, and in my personal opinion here tonight, is I would like to see some type of a combination deal. I'd like to say that I was very impressed specifically with the folks from Mead, who we saw first, and later on, the firm of KP. With that, I was also very impressed with the folks from Peliquin, who, their expertise is in with labor. So I would like to see the town move forward with the firm. I think if I had to choose one, my first choice would be KP. And then also look to bring on Peliquin for specifically our labor. In addition to that, recognizing the importance of the Olin and NET site, I'd like to see the town go after and retain Mr. Deutsch, who does have that expertise, as a special Town Counsel, so that we don't lose that expertise on a very special and very, very important issue here that's been facing our community for many years, and I would anticipate for many more. And so I know that, that the manager has reached out to Mr. Deutsch about that. I look forward to hearing about if he's interested in something like that. But again, if I'm forced to make a decision here tonight, I would be prepared to support the KP Law, Peliquin for Labor, and Mr. Dan Deutsch to stay on for Olin. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments down, down here?
I, like Mr. Bendel, take this as a very serious appointment for us. It's going to be the, the biggest decision I would have made in the year and a half or so I've been on the board. I think, I do take it very serious. I also called, talked to Town, I talked to all the department heads that were on the search committee, I talked to a couple others, I talked to a couple former Selectmen, I talked to a couple of the towns that currently have Mr. Durensis or had Mr. Durensis' firm. And I also talked to Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager. And I'm prepared to support KP Law with, of course, the special Town Counsel that Greg just mentioned, of Dan Deutsch for Olin and Transrail. I think that would be best suited for the town. That's what I came up with, and that's how I feel.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very sorry to interrupt, but I did, I failed to mention the communities that I reached out to and had conversations with are the references from KP, who are the Town of North Reading and the Town of Aricca. Both of our neighbors reached out, who currently have KP. And I was very pleased to hear, hear good references from both.
Thank you. Mr. Eaton?
I do want to echo Selectmen Bendel's praise for the five firms that we did get to meet with. I felt like they all brought a lot to the table. Regardless of who we choose and how they are representing us, I would like to see the structure in place where, at the very least, we are getting a breakdown organized by matter of the hours spent, so that we have the opportunity to make an assessment on what the costs could be, so that in subsequent years for reappointing or possible reappointing, we're as educated as we possibly can be, rather than just an incremental flat fee going up. I did speak to an individual in Nantucket today. I chose Nantucket because they were actually listed as a current client of KP and also a previous client of Deutsch Williams, now Brooks and Durensis. And understanding that it was unlikely that I was going to be receiving feedback that was, I guess, negative towards KP, I did press him a little bit as to what were the decisions or the thought process for the Select Board in Nantucket to move away from Deutsch Williams towards KP. And cost was a driving factor. The individual I spoke with is in the Planning Department, and so was only, could only speak really to KP's, his experience with KP Law within the field of real estate and zoning issues. And his description of, his comparative description, KP Law versus Deutsch Williams, was KP Law's service was way superior. It was a quote, "way superior." I, I do agree that the institutional knowledge that Attorney Dan Deutsch brings is likely irreplaceable. It's something that has been going on for quite some time, and I would very strongly suggest and recommend that we find a way to retain his services for the New England Transrail and Olin matters. I think that that serves our community best, which is why we're all up here. I do find myself supporting KP Law for the remainder of the legal services. So finding a way to try and retain Brooks and Durensis as special counsel. And I understand that that usually implies that there is a slightly elevated hourly rate for special counsel, as opposed to the hourly rate that was quoted in the Brooks and Durensis proposal for Town Counsel services with everything under the same roof. But my, my recommendation, or my thoughts, that we would be best served as a community, retain Dan Deutsch as special counsel through Brooks and Durensis on the Olin and New England Transrail matters, and KP Law for the remainder of our municipal legal services.
Thank you. I, too, went through the same process as my colleagues here. First and foremost, I want to praise all five firms for, for coming here and presenting their, their firm to us and explaining what they can do for us and helping out the residents. But I did the same. I called references, I talked to department heads, I talked to a former Selectman, and I did call two towns inquiring as well. And I come up with the same feeling that KP Law and Mead are the two firms that I thought would best serve the town. Peliquin for Labor, without a doubt, is outstanding. And I was concerned, too, with Olin and the Transrail. And that's why I had our Town Manager reach out to Mr. Durensis on, I believe, four occasions at this point, maybe even five.
Yeah, certainly, multiple of them.
Multiple occasions to see if we could make arrangements to retain Dan Deutsch. And at least three times, there was no response, or just a response that didn't provide us with what we were asking. And then two times, we've, we've received no response to this, to date. But that certainly doesn't mean that if we choose a firm tonight, that we cannot still pursue Dan Deutsch and his services as special Town Counsel. Because I, too, am talking with other towns, they do this quite often. They have special Town Counsels that they rely upon and call on for, for certain aspects of the government. So that's where I'm standing right now.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Now, we talked about the references. Now, let's talk about the dollar amount. I'm looking under KP Law. And if, first of all, Jeff, did you talk to Paul Durensis at all? I mean, what I'm looking at is, let's say you fire our present Town Counsel. I don't think they're going to come back and want to do Olin Chemical. No, I'm just saying.
We're not firing our present Town Counsel. The Town Counsel...
If you make a choice of somebody...
The Town Counsel...
Let me rephrase that. If you make a choice of someone else. But the point I want to make here is, there's a, in KP Law, all they're appropriating is $50,000 to be used for Olin and New England Transrail. And if you hire somebody special, I'm sure you're not going to get the flat rate like we're accustomed to. They're going to be getting probably a lot more money. And they're only allocating $50,000 out of that budget for Olin and New England Transrail? That's insane. That's crazy. That's, I can't see that happening. You know, it's going to go well above that. You know? I'm looking at it economically, number one. Number two, I mean, I can't speak for, what is it, Brooks and Durensis? So if you decide not to reappoint them and appoint somebody else, do you really think that they're going to want to continue on doing Olin and New England Transrail, knowing that they get the boot? That's how I look at it. They've been here for 15 years. 15 years they've been here, you know?
Chairman, if I could, I guess I'm just challenged with the notion that we're not retaining Durensis as a counsel. We're in this position because they have dissolved as a firm. And a new fraction of that firm would like to become our new Town Counsel. So it's not as if we're getting rid of our old Town Counsel. They broke up, for lack of a better term. And now we're faced with a decision whether to choose a fraction of that firm who has started a new firm, or four other firms. I just want to be clear on that, that I don't think we're, we didn't get up together a few weeks ago and say, you know what? Let's get rid of this firm that we have, and let's get a new one. They broke up, we're faced with a decision.
And it's a, and it's a new firm.
No, I totally agree. It's a new firm. No, you're absolutely right. But it was the labor law partners that left. You still have all the big guns when it comes to municipal law. You have everybody still. That's, you know, I'm just saying that.
There were a few new faces there that they didn't have from before that really were not up to par. But anyways, I just want to...
I'd like to also add that Rick Hudson is no longer with them. He works at the Town of Lowell, from a conversation I had today. So he's in their resume as, as a part of the big guns. He's no longer with them. So further deteriorated law firm than the one we hired last year that we had last year. So we have to look at the whole picture.
And can I, can I just have the Town Manager answer the question in regards to $50,000?
Yeah, I think there's a misunderstanding with respect to this $50,000. There's no suggestion that the NET and Olin is simply just a cost of $50,000. You'll note, under the KP proposal, that they offer a number of different scenarios. One being if they were to serve as counsel for the full ball of wax, if you will. There's a second level of service, if they were to serve as general counsel but not including labor. And then the other category is if they were to serve exclusive of labor and NET in Olin. So they've made some approximations as to what they would be able to reduce their fees by if those particular segments of the service were taken away from them. And so that's what the...
It says they give them up a credit up to $50,000, a credit up to. They're not going to pay anything over $50,000. That's what it says. Credit up to $50,000 for costs incurred by special counsel for Olin and New England Transrail. Says it right there.
Right.
Up to $50,000. I said retain $50,000, but up to 50, you know? So, all right, it's up to $50,000. That's the max they'll pay if they decide, if you folks decide to hire Dan Deutsch. That's what they're willing to pay, up to that amount.
Mr. Eaton, you had something to add?
Yeah, just, I, I had asked Brooks and Durensis, when they were here, about prior year billables. And the response that I got was that it wasn't available to them. Whatever happened, it dissolved that Deutsch Williams. So we don't really know how much, how many billable hours per year Deutsch Williams was putting in, Brooks and Durensis, Deutsch Williams, whatever it was. So we really, we're kind of dealing with a bit of uncertainty here. We don't know how much, on a yearly, ongoing basis, of their effort was really allocated towards New England Transrail and Olin. We can assume it was somewhat significant, but to, I don't, I don't want to get into the guessing game as to how much it was, because we gave them the opportunity to try and tell us how much it was. And our Town Manager certainly went back to them a number of times to say, can you give us a quote for just this one segment? And to be honest, I don't really blame Mr. Durensis for not giving us an answer, because that would make it easier for this board to decide to limit the, the scope of work that we were giving to them. But I, I don't think that we could really be getting into the guessing game as to how much of their legal work was allocated to that one portion of our, our legal needs. KP Lock took a guess at 50 grand. It's, I'd certainly like to see the, the number or the dollar figure go down for legal services, but I think everybody on this board recognizes that Dan Deutsch is the one we want to stay with for, for that portion. As far as whether or not they would want to continue, I certainly hope that they would. If KP Law is not a firm that lives up to their reputation, or is not providing a high standard of legal work, Brooks and Durensis has a foot already in the door. And we're back here having a conversation where a couple of us are eating crow and the rest of it, and basically saying, Brooks and Durensis, come on back. So this isn't a decision that I take lightly. As when I was a practicing attorney, I certainly wasn't in the business of encouraging clients to fire their counselor to switch counsel. It's, it's a task that I, I don't take lightly. But I, for me, at Deutsch Williams, it was time for them to change. And I think for a portion of our legal services, I think it's time for us to make a change, too. too.
Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, the point, when Mr. Durensis was here, Mr. Eaton, he was talking about a flat fee. So it was like an insurance policy for the town. We could run multiple hours on Olin or whatever. You know, we can flex our muscle and say, you want to sue us? That's fine. We have a town council that's on flat fee and we'll see you in court. Now, it was in my words, but you're talking about, would be nice to see the billable hours. These aren't my words. It was the town manager. And it was asked, I think, by the chairman to the town manager, who made that call not to get billable hours? And the town manager did state that it was, he was under the assumption that it was the previous town manager that did not want that. And it seems to have gone on like that for years and years. And then when Jeff took over, it continued that way. It was stated here. You know, these aren't words that, from me, that, from the town manager himself. You know, it would be nice to see billable hours, to see who's doing what, who's calling who, who's talking to who. You know, so, you know, but, you know, I just, I just put that forward, that it's a, was a flat fee and it covered everything, one big umbrella.
If I could clarify my earlier comment, just in case I wasn't clear. What I, I feel would be most effective, most efficient is rather than a, a daily log entry that some firms do for billable hours at the end of each month, so we're getting kind of a stack of papers that's this high. And on the 16th, there was a .2 put in, and this is a description. I'm thinking more of a chalk, a one or two page with a list of the matters and a summary of the hours put in. So kind of, we can kind of go through and, and get the big picture rather than the nitty gritty detail of, you know, an attorney wrote a letter and it took her 18 minutes to do it. So.
No question, I want to agree with Mr. Eaton. No matter who we choose, I think we ought to pursue that so we can identify, is it perhaps we need to, you know, allocate more time to looking into more labor attorneys or a particular issue zoning, whatever, environmental, whatever it may be, so that the town can make a better inform. We, we don't have that information right now when we made this decision. Future boards might, might benefit from that decision, from that information when making decisions. One other thing I want to add, Mr. Chair, if I could, I don't think was made, stated here tonight, is that since our last interviews, we did receive correspondence from a couple of the firms in terms of changing the price tag. So without getting into specifics, that should be noted here for everybody at home to know that, you know, they did kind of, there was some back and forth in terms of firms adjusting their rates. And I don't think that was televised. I want to make sure that was known.
Thank you. And, and the firms, with the exception of Murphy, Hessy, Toomey, and Lohane, all had flat retainer fees. So, just so that everybody's aware of that as well. Mr. Hall, do you want to jump in with some thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, there is no question from my perspective that it is important for us to seek to retain Dan Deutsch in particular because of, as has been previously noted, his experience in dealing with Olin and NET. He's been involved in the Olin situation since 2005. You know, the history goes back to at least 1986. So there's a long history. It's a complicated history that's been, started out with the DEP and then EPA. So any, anyone who assumes that role in a new capacity, and certainly there are many attorneys that are very capable attorneys and environmental attorneys, it's going to take some time. I'm guessing several months, maybe, you know, more than a year. It's hard for me to judge that, but certainly I would say several months, six or eight months or more to come up to speed. You know, the other attorneys with the firm, as I noted in my memo, Lou Ross, I found to be very capable and timely in his responses. As also the folks, the other folks that I dealt with there. I, I do have to say though, and I specifically commented to this effect when I spoke with Mr. Durensis, that I found his presentation very disappointing. You know, I, I think he would have, the firm would have been far better served if, if his presentation had sought to accent why we should hire the firm as opposed to the bad things about his competition. That's, I don't think ever a good approach to take. It's like when you're interviewing for a job and you say, well, you know, I know you're looking to hire XYZ or they're, they're no good, but you ought to hire me. Well, if I'm on the receiving end of that, I'm going to say, well, geez, that's really not the approach I want to, the type of approach I'd like to hear. It kind of raises questions. So with, with respect to the other types of law, whether it's the general counsel, prep for town meetings, you know, I don't think, as much as I have enjoyed working with the folks from Deutsch Williams and Brooks and Durensis and find them very capable, I don't believe that we are going to fall off the end of the earth if we hire other council. I'm particularly impressed with the Collins, Lofgren, and Pelican firm for labor. We do have six unions that we deal with on a regular basis, whether it's for collective bargaining, you know, invariably and inevitably grievances come up, any number of issues. It's important for us to have strong labor council. And I, I think it, in my estimation, we would be incredibly well-served with that firm as a labor council. And with respect to the other portions of the program, the general, more general counsel, I, I tend to agree that whether it's KP or MEED, either firm, in my estimation, I was very impressed with their interviews. And I thought that their experience and based upon what I've been able to gather in talking to colleagues, both firms have very capable attorneys that could serve the town well. And so, you know, I, I would like to see us be able to retain Dan Deutsch for the environmental piece. As I, as was mentioned earlier, I have had a number of email exchanges with Attorney Durensis. We've spoken at least once or twice anyways in the last couple of weeks here. I know Mr. Deutsch has been on vacation and I guess is not returning until tomorrow. But I've also, you know, certainly would be, have reached out to him as well and certainly could do that going forward.
Thank you. One more other comment I'd like to offer, if I could, is that I found myself in the last couple of weeks when weighing this decision, continually going back to, I haven't found a person that said one bad thing about Dan Deutsch. He's an expert, there's no question. He's invaluable to this community. He is the furthermore expert on this particular issue in Olin and NET. We can all agree on that, no question. Because he's been involved with it for over 20 years. He's been practicing lawyer for 30 years, it's my understanding. And so I kept finding, bringing myself to the question, well, even if we did choose Brooks and Durensis, that at some point, Dan Deutsch is going to, you know, move on in his career, move on in his life and retire. We have two retirement letters here tonight in the packet. Eventually people do retire. We can't expect he's going to work 60 years. So at some point, we need to have him start to transition the information, the knowledge that he has to whether it's somebody in his law firm or in, what I would like to see, the town go very aggressively after him so that we could take his knowledge over the next couple of years or however long it takes to transfer. Because it's a fact of life. He eventually is going to retire too. He's worked 30 years. He's entitled to his time to move on. So I just wanted to offer that, that's something that, one of the questions I thought to myself, he's an expert, we ought to go aggressively after him. But eventually everybody's time comes that they retire and move on. So we need to be prepared for that at some point.
Maybe a point in time would be like Tom Brady. But anyway, what I was going to say was, you know, relative to, Jeff, did you, did you ever talk to Paul Durensis? First, let me go on the record, when they hired Paul Durensis years ago, I didn't vote for Durensis. I voted for Copeland and Page 15 years ago. We had two former selectmen in the audience that voted for Mr. Durensis and team. And as time went along, you did a good job. But for the record, I did. And when you talk about Mr. Durensis making negativity comments, I remember Mr. Copeland, Mr. Copeland from Copeland and Page, he was sitting right there joining the team. And he said a couple of things about the firm being big and he rather, he didn't think it would work out to a certain degree in a roundabout way. And that was him. And I'm just asking you, Jeff, did, did you ever talk to Paul Durensis and ask him that? Because we were talking about these changes and I'm sure that you, you know, we're talking about these changes. Did you ever talk to Paul? And you said you couldn't get a hold of Dan Deutsch, he's on vacation. Did you ever talk to Durensis and tell him straight out that, you know, the board has a lot of options because I know we have them? And we might just hire Mr. Dan Deutsch as special counsel for him? Did you actually talk to him and get a response?
Yes, I, I did speak with, I did speak with Paul. I, I know I spoke with him at least specifically on one occasion, may have been a couple, I'd have to go back. But there were certainly multiple email exchanges as follow-ups. And, and one of the things I did indicate to Paul and indicated to these other firms was that the board, from the direction I had, was looking at multiple options. One being a so-called umbrella arrangement where one firm gets hired for the whole panoply of issues. Another option was to carve out employment and labor law. And then a third option being contemplated was to carve out potentially labor and the Olin slash NET piece. So when I talked to Paul, it was either via conversation or email conveyed to him that those were issues that were being considered by the board. And so I was looking to obtain information about, you know, what those scenarios would translate down to. If, for example, the labor piece was pulled out, what would the fee be? And he did respond to that. And you'll see in the correspondence there that the fee was reduced by a margin from his original amount. I'm not sure exactly why I didn't get the response on the Olin NET piece. He, in one of the communications, indicated he was looking for more information. I was never really clear on what more information was. He did indicate in the course of our exchange that it is a team effort, it isn't just Dan Deutsch, you know, that is involved in NET and Olin. So, you know, from my perspective, he's certainly the most prominent attorney in the firm that is working on those cases. But I, I'm not there, so I can't say who else is involved.
So to show out of it, he didn't answer you. Is that what you're saying?
He didn't provide the information that I was looking for, similar to the information he provided if labor council was taken out of their contract.
All right. I'll just make one last point. When Mr. Bendel brought up, and I agree, when you're talking about, the firms did decrease their, their fee. And Durensis did reduce it to 288,000, but it's an umbrella to do it all. And Copeland, KP, excuse me, they dropped it down to 300. So I know 12,000 is not going to really make an issue here or break the bank. But just that way you know that, when you talk about saving money, they did do that. But, you know, that's, 12,000 is not going to break the bank, obviously.
Just to add some specifics on Mr. Hall's comment, he had sent an email, and this was in our packets, on June 18th. The last paragraph is, "Thank you for providing," this is to Paul Durensis of Brooks and Durensis. "Thank you for providing a revised price proposal for the board to consider if they seek to hire separate labor and employment council. Your email does not address the costs to the town if Brooks and Durensis is called upon just for the purposes, purpose of providing legal service for the two previously named cases, that being the Olin Superfund side and the New England Trans Rail petition before the Surface Transportation Board. Are you able to provide such a proposal or is such an arrangement not an option?" Email chain goes back and forth two more times and Attorney Durensis is just asking more qualifying questions. I, I saw that to be, he's kind of just making sure our decisions a little bit more difficult. Because if, if he says yes and this is what it is, then I think the chances of, in his mind, of Brooks and Durensis being carved out increase.
Chairman, I'd like to respond. Mr. McCoy mentioned how big KP Law is. I did a lot of research on them. Over 70 of the towns are west of Worcester and are very, very small. They brought up on the interview process, we asked them those questions. If you did the research like I did, that's what I came up with. I came off about 12 firms, 12 towns that are about the size of Wilmington. There are five or six or eight that are much bigger than Wilmington in large cities. But it's why I picked, that I'm, I'm supporting KP Law. Now, there was also mention that Mr. Durensis has lowered his price. When the town hired them in 2003, six or eight months, maybe less than a year later, you guys better pay me more or I'm quitting. I remember that. I don't want to, I don't want to go down that path again with them. So they're going to be 288,000 this year? What are they going to be next year or the year after or the year after? So, so.
If I could dovetail off of Mr. Bendel's point, and part of this is certainly because of where in, in their lifecycle Brooks and Durensis is, where they had mentioned that they're not hiring new young associates. And I think that the point that they were trying to make is that everybody up there is, has a great deal of experience. I think one of the benefits, and I spent my entire litigation career in small firms and I kind of resented big firms, is one of the benefits of having a larger firm is you have the people that are kind of coming up through the ranks. So then if we were to go with them when the next big issue comes up, because at some point, another big sensitive legal issue is going to come up, you have the attorneys that are kind of cutting their teeth under the more experienced attorneys in a big law firm that could be capable of stepping in and providing that long-term experience and insight into advising and advocating on our behalf. That isn't where Brooks and Durensis is right now. Maybe they are going to be building themselves back up. But again, they've, they've been open for less than three months now. So it's kind of tough to say. But again, I, I think we're all in violent agreement that retaining Dan Deutsch is in the best interest of the town. And like, I'll echo everyone else's comments, we should be very aggressive in making sure that that happens.
I'd just like to add, if you can find out where Dan Deutsch is on vacation, we ought to send him some room service from the Town of Wilmington. So I'll just close with that. Thank you.
I just want to say, I see some folks here in the audience, obviously, and I'm just curious to see what the feeling of the folks are over here.
Well, they'll be able to speak under public comments. Okay, now next is to make the appointment. We have a couple of options. We can choose one firm that would handle the entire.
Are we happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Or we can go with two firms, one that would handle the town council end of it, one would handle labor. So.
Are we happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman? Just put it out there. But before I do it for you, I mean, there's some folks in the audience, I like, just through you, I'd be curious out of people raising their hands, how many are in favor of retaining the present town council? Do they want to raise their hands or not? I see a lot of folks out here.
Okay. You'll be able to speak under public comment?
That's going to be, that's going to be after the appointment, you know?
That's right. It's the selectman's appointment.
No, 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 you're the chairman. Nope, you're the chairman.
That's correct. Yes, sir. Is there a, is there a, is there a motion that we're going to take?
Chairman, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion first.
Yes, Mr. Loud, go ahead.
I thought I, I thought I was going to make a motion that I said.
No, you, you had asked him to speak and then I just heard Mr. Loud.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the town engage KP Law and strongly suggest that we get special town council of Dan Deutsch for the Olin and New England Trans Rail.
Okay, there's a motion for KP Law with the recommendation that we reach out to Dan Deutsch to retain him as council for Olin and New England Trans Rail. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second if a discussion, and if I could, just again, try to advocate that the town pursue Pelican for labor. I don't know if Mr. Loud is willing to amend his motion, but if not, I respect that. Again, I just wanted to put that out there. That was my feeling. But I will second his motion.
Okay, a motion and a second? Okay, a motion and a second? Mr. Loud, would you be interested in amending?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Then I will still second his motion.
Any discussion? No further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of retaining KP Law as town council? Signify by raising your hand. We have four opposed, and one against four. Favor, one opposed. Okay. Think that's it?
Let me just ask this question then. In terms of the approach with KP, is the, does the board have any particular? There were various scenarios that KP presented. Is that something that you wish to make a decision on? Or leave it up to me to do that? So you'll, you'll recall that they presented a couple of scenarios. One being a fixed amount for 310,000. And then there was another option. Actually, it would be 310 minus, assuming that Dan Deutsch is able to provide the services minus the costs associated with their services. But then the other option was an amount of 312.
It went down to $300,000, Jeff.
I'm sorry, yes, 300,000 flat. Or if the board wants to go to 312, and the, turns out the actual hours of service are less than that, then the town would pay the lesser amount. So is there a?
And they also had a cap as well, right?
Yes.
For that.
That's right.
So that's what we want to maintain, is that cap, so that we're not going above the 300,000 if we go with the flat.
Right, so the 300,000, the town would pay that amount potentially minus the costs associated with Olin and NET, regardless of what the billable hours are. So if the billable hours turned out to be, the cost associated with those billable hours turned out to be 220,000, the town is still paying the 300,000. The other option that they presented was the 312,000. Again, this is separate from NET and Olin. For the $312,000 annual option, if it turns out that the billable hours are actually less than that, the town would pay the lesser amount. So I think that those are, I guess it becomes a question of, do we, do we believe? Certainly, if we go with, if the board goes with 300,000, that's what you're going to pay, or the town is going to pay regardless of what the hours are associated with legal services. If the board elects to go to the 312, there's certainly the prospect of paying up to $12,000 more. But if legal services are less than the 12,000, then the board would, would pay a lesser amount.
And with that, it would cap off. So if it was, if we were to pay more, they wouldn't go above that.
They would not go above 312.
Right.
Right.
Hopefully, the gentleman, we interviewed him. He stayed right here, Mr. Chairman, if we could. He said, "I think you're paying way too much with your present town council. So maybe he'll surprise, he'll surprise us KP Law and charge us a lot less than the 312." So we'll see what happens. Thank you.
So in the absence of any, I guess, any further direction, I'll just have a conversation with the representative from KP and use my best judgment, I guess.
Is there any opinion on this?
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Eaton requested earlier, I would agree if we get a breakdown, it would, so we can see it.
I think in, under any scenario, we would certainly be looking at getting the backup in terms of hours spent on various cases.
All right. Onto public comments. Anyone who wishes to speak? Yes, please, when you state your name and address. Yes, yeah.
My name is Jonathan Glasser. I live at 85 Main Street. A few feet away from Olin, I can see it from my window. One thing before I go into the other election, you guys are filing divorce papers. There's something wrong, they will know. Or probably never will know. You know what divorce paper talking about, right? With that, with the lawyers. Anyway, I go back 15, 20 years ago when it's week five with the Olin Transrail started. And Mr. Kada, you're not your brother. People from here went to Washington and the Attorney General represented us. When you guys came back, for a long time, even from you, Mr. Olin, I hear from you both, from your mouth, our good job, the Deutsch employee did for us in Washington, and just those big guys and that. And for me, that I live right there, you guys probably don't even know sometime Olin, but it's. I guess I said this. They had a little chance to save us. The only guy today, he reminds the Deutsch. Because it seems that he knows what he's doing and he's strong enough to fight this with me. Now, all of a sudden, he's not going anymore. What did he do? He did something wrong. Tell us, you know what I mean? You guys all talking, he want this law, firm law. Then he said, "Well, get him to go Olin Transrail." Mr. Eaton, are you a lawyer?
I am.
You want a part-time job? I guess somebody, with somebody else? I don't think you want it, right?
I, I, I don't, I'm sorry.
You know what I mean? He want to, he want to hire Mr. Durensis or the lawyers to just work on Olin Transrail. And the other guy, the other stuff, you think he's going to set that? No. He'll never set it.
He's asking if you want a part-time job, you will not.
Oh, no.
Just be one at a time, please.
You know what I mean? The other thing I would say, right, it's summertime, right? Why don't you guys make a little simple meeting? Go home, enjoy summer. Do this stuff later when there's more people around.
Yes.
Suzanne Sullivan, 61st Street. I mean, you guys, I don't understand. I mean, I understand why you have to do interviews. And you have every right to do that. What I don't understand is, why did Deutsch Williams do so bad that you want to leave the town at higher risk? And the point is, Dan Deutsch doesn't have to say, "Yeah, I'll be special town council." And you're expecting him to say, "Oh, yeah, you just threw my firm under the bus, and now I'm going to do work for you?" Are you kidding me? That's what you expect from him? Is he supposed to be that much of a bigger person than you guys? Because that's what you're asking, for him to be a bigger person than what you are. I mean, you know this is political. This isn't about what's in the best interest of the town. You don't sit up there and smug like it is. It's not. It's political. I have the floor. I have the floor. It is political. You've been on the board like no time. You've been on the board like no time. You feel you've been on the board. I mean, I don't care if you guys want to like sub everything out and, you know, have a cost to town more money just so you can have a political say? Because that's what it is. Let's be honest. I'm an honest person. You might not like what I have to say, but I say what's honest. And that's what everybody here thinks. That's how it looks. Because there's no really a good reason to do what you're doing. And you're leaving the town at risk. Because if Dan Deutsch says no, and he has every right, and you couldn't blame him for doing it, then what? And we deserve to have the best council here. Olin hires the best. They have the best environmental attorneys in the world. Not just the country, the world. New England Transrail, they had Baker Botts. Baker Botts worked for the Bush administration. Baker Botts worked as a personal attorney for the Bushes, for Halliburton. These are the kind of firms that we're talking about. And you guys want to play games, political games, for the town council. And that's what you're doing. To me, it's a political game, and you're leaving the town at risk. If Dan Deutsch says no, we're screwed. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes.
Rob Tesula, 28 Magery Road. My comments, not to you guys, because I kind of expected this outcome. My comments to the people watching. There's an election next year, and two of these individuals are up for reelection. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Frank West, 25th Road. I was in your position, 2003. We had a choice to keep current council, stay at a law firm, or go with, you know, a different, take a different direction. We didn't have the, I didn't necessarily have the experience that Mike McCoy had for being on the board for 13 years. I was basically like Mr. Eaton. Suzanne was too. Okay? But I think that we did, at least in my case, I made my case for the law firm that I picked, which was Deutsch Williams. I would head against Mike McCoy audit, to be honest with you. And, you know, I'm kind of surprised that I'm actually saying, "Thank you, Mike, for, for supporting Deutsch Williams," or whatever we, whatever that law firm is today. I mean, I do agree that it's a different law firm than it was six months, a year ago, whatever. But the principles of the, of the firm are essentially the same. I mean, you might have a couple of changes here and there, but you have Kim Solat, who was there in 2003 when I was there. Obviously, Dan Deutsch, Paul Durensis. You know, I could probably, you know, go back and mention a few more. And really, in specific to Mr. Bendel's comment that, "Well, Dan Deutsch is going to retire someday." Well, you know what? Mr. Hall's going to retire someday soon, someday. So in your contract, maybe you should have, you know, some, some sort of an out clause for Mr. Hall or any of these town employees. There's probably, what, 400 town employees? And you got two resignations or two retirements? I mean, yeah, we're all going to retire at some point. But I just think that Mr. Deutsch has given no indication that he's specifically going to retire. I mean, he's actually mentioned in, you know, going into this new law firm. So, I mean, I, I wish his luck, but I, you know, I have my reservations. You know, I mean, maybe, maybe the audience, maybe we'll be the ones that saw Mr. Eaton said Eaton Crow. But to be honest with you, I don't want to see the town of Wilmington Eaton Crow. So, you know, if you have the opportunity to potentially rethink your decision, that's a decision you guys need to make. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Deb Thompson, 94 Moesap. How long does the new contract last for for this new law firm?
One, one year. So this is an annual contract.
So annual, so like, and when do you have to have it by? I'm just trying to think of all the different scenarios in my mind.
Well, so the existing contract expires June 30th.
So you have to have a decision by then?
We have to have council unless there's some kind of an extension arrangement with current council. We would have to have new council for 7-1.
I mean, I live right behind Olin. And to be honest with you, I didn't realize, I guess I was a naive girl when I moved here. So I didn't realize this kind of stuff actually went on with the developments and stuff like that. And Dan Deutsch has been part of this and has worked hard so that we're not, we know that we're, everything's going in the right direction for us at this point. Somebody new coming along, trying to figure out the ways, and big old law firm with a lot of power legals, I get that as they try to make their ways through and try to figure out these new. Like she says, these other companies, they have huge law firms that are going to just chew us up and spit us out. And then we'll have that, God only knows. I mean, it's just, it's scary to have a new law firm come in with all the stuff. And I know you don't live in that area, most likely, so it doesn't scare you as much. It scares me more because when I came home one day, and nobody, nobody in the, they were drilling at the bottom of my street to check for contaminants coming through the bottom of my street. So yes, it's a big problem. And I prefer to see somebody in, in there that knows what's going on and can fight them so that I can live in my house, I can sell my house when I retire, a long time from now. And, do you know what I mean? And there's no worries. I just feel like you have somebody in there right now that really knows what they're doing. And I, and it scares me that you'll go to somebody else that's another law firm that doesn't miss. I'm not saying, I know every law firm, every attorney that's passed the bar, I give you kudos, you're smart, you've got it all together. This guy knows the case, knows the work. That's what we need. Someone that knows the case, knows the work, and that can really fight for us at this point. I know that eventually we'll, you know, maybe it would be good to get somebody else, but maybe we need to know more of what he's doing. Maybe we work with them. Maybe you get a detailed billing report to see exactly what's going on, to know what he's talking about, who he's talking to, who he wrote a letter to. Because that's your, you deserve that. So you know, okay, he spent 15 minutes on the phone with the EPA. He spent 20 minutes on the phone with the governor. He spent, you, if you get a detailed billing report, I do the billing, you can know exactly what that attorney is doing and who they're talking to. And it might give you some more insight into who he's talking to and what the heck is going on. I'm just, that's just my two cents.
If I could just offer one comment. I think there's, it seems to me that the tenor of the comments here is essentially that because of the expertise that Dan Deutsch has, and there's no question that he has the history on this case. And I think it's universal across the table that everyone is seeking to retain the services that he provides. But I, what it, what I seem to be hearing is that because of this, because of the fact that he happens to have that knowledge of that case, then we have to, or we, the board of selectmen, should retain the entire firm strictly on the basis of that issue. And there's no question that's an important issue. But should the board be really making a decision about all of its legal services? Its planning and conservation, its general counsel, its labor, all hinged upon one individual who has the, granted the history dealing with this, you know, terrible environmental situation?
Is there someone else?
Kelly Richards, 31 Shady Lane Drive. I'm just curious how many, how many selectmen spoke with people in the abutting neighborhood and got their opinions on how they feel the current law firm has been doing? If they have also spoken with, when they were speaking with other communities, did the other communities have a major contamination problem like the one that we have in Wilmington? And if so, you know, were they happy with the law firm? I know you spoke in general with the issues that they're facing, but their issues might not be the same as we're facing here in Wilmington. And so I think that's an important consideration and especially important to have someone who is a very good environmental lawyer, as Suzanne said. And I'm also wondering if any selectmen spoke with people that are on the current environmental boards in Wilmington to get their opinions about our current legal representation. And I, you know, don't know a lot about the lawyers that you're selecting or the law firms that you're looking at. And I'm sure they are all really qualified. I am really concerned about switching lawyers or because of this huge problem. I don't live in the area, but I feel really concerned about the people who do live in the area, especially after coming this far. You know, I'm sure that they all would like to have an end in sight and to feel safe in their homes and on their properties. in their homes and on their properties. And lastly, I do want to say that old people are wise. And I'm sensing, like, I just feel like it's a little disrespectful to say, like, that, you know, "Oh, we've got these young guns that could come up in KP Law Firm and sink their teeth into it." Like, people who have been around for a while know stuff. And I don't know, maybe it's like an American thing that it's bothering me, especially as I become older and wiser, you know? And I do appreciate coming to these meetings and seeing, like, you know, people with his, like, just, you know, history in the town and, you know, to know what existed in this area, that area, and know what contaminants are there to make it right. And I guess when I'm looking to all of you as our elected officials that, you know, I mean, I guess you already made your decision, but if there's a chance to review it, I hope, like, in your hearts, you really are looking at the decision that makes it right for the town of Wilmington, right for the people who are abutters and such. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to respond to a few of the comments. Every decision I make is for the people of Wilmington, okay? So it's not political in my eyes. And yes, I did contact KP Law, because when they were here in front of us, they talked about a case in Randolph similar to ours. And so didn't, so didn't Deutsch Williams. And Dan Deutsch is special town council for a couple of towns on the same, same environmental thing. So that's why I felt confident that we could still hire him as special town council. So that every law firm that we sat in front of us the last couple of weeks, some of their lawyers are also special town council in the groups in their expertise of law, including Dan Deutsch. Okay? Brooks and Durensis is not the same Williams, the same firm that Mr. Sullivan and Mr. West hired in 2003. They're not. Okay? Lou Ross wasn't there then. He's excellent. I wish he was at another firm. All right? That, that's why I made my decision. If you watch their interview, I said that night, I was very disappointed in Deutsch, in Brooks and Williams, Brooks and Durensis, very disappointed, because I expected a lot more out of them, because of what they've done for this town. And yes, we got emails and letters from people in and around Olin. And everyone that I interviewed and we interviewed, we talked about the Olin case. We all did intensely. And it's the reason why I decided to make a motion to hire KP Law and Dan Deutsch as special town council. And I'm going to stick behind that decision, because I feel it's best for the people of Wilmington. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I could just respond to Ms. Richards' questions. So I mentioned that I talked to the towns of North Reading and Barica. Neither of those obviously have a contamination issue, certainly not of the magnitude of what we're dealing with in Wilmington and the Woben Line. I do want to cite, obviously, Mr. Lau, just repeat what he said, that the KP Law firm is currently dealing with a similar situation, won't say that it's as serious, but they did describe something as serious in a community there. And in terms, I did read the letter, obviously, we did get a lot of emails from folks and phone calls, a lot of very favorable ones for, for some, almost all of them, to be honest with you. So it was a really difficult decision, certainly when we take into account any decision, we're thinking about what's best. I mean, I know I'm thinking about what the community that I grew up in, there's no question, I don't live next to Olin, but I certainly have, I hope that, you know, in my two years here, have asked questions and done things to show that I sincerely care about what goes on there, the people that live there, the quality of life that they have, they deserve it just as, just as much as any other resident. That's why, you know, I've met with Senator Seth Moulton's office on it in the past, and trying to do everything I can as well, certainly more can be done, but just to answer your question there. None of, none of the towns that I talked to had a serious issue like we do, and I guess I did read the, the letter that was submitted. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Eaton?
Briefly, and I'll try and speak up through a cold. Some of you know that my brother is a survivor of acute myelogenous leukemia that may have come as a result of drinking groundwater that was contaminated. We have, I've lived my entire life in Wilmington until about seven or eight years ago, my brother lived here too. This is not a decision that I'm making for political purposes. It serves me no political advantage or any personal advantage. I think the, we don't normally have special counsel. We've known, we in the past have done most everything in-house with one firm. And there is very much a recognition that Attorney Deutsch is one of the best attorneys in the Commonwealth, and one of the best attorneys that we could possibly have for such a very sensitive and high conflict issue. This is something that we need to retain him for, and this is why I even mentioned in my comments earlier, that special councils usually charge a higher hourly rate than regular town council does. This is something that I think that we need to prioritize. I think that Attorney Dan Deutsch retain him is something that is in the best interest of the town, so other families don't have to go through what my family went through. And my family is one of the lucky ones. So this is, I can understand you're upset, because change is always something that brings about some fear, but this is an attempt by this board to retain the same town council that we have had on the Olin and New England Trans Rail matters for quite some time. And we were doing everything we can from our comments to aggressively retain that same attorney and his knowledge and just institutional knowledge. It's not something that can be replaced. It's not something that you can just hire another attorney off the shelf and throw at this very fact-sensitive matter, and I think we all recognize that. And I think our comments here universally do. With the exception of the one firm that only provided labor and employment advice, the Olin and New England Trans Rail topic was discussed ad nauseam, because that was what is at the top of every one of the minds of my colleagues up here on the board. And in fact, the, the firm that really got the least amount of discussion here tonight was the firm that's comments on the Olin and New England Trans Rail matter, I felt were the least impressive and pretty disappointing. And because of that, in my own mind, was disqualifying. So I do very much recognize that Olin and New England Trans Rail, they're not going away, and we need to do everything that we can as a community to maintain some level of continuity in who's representing us. And I think, I don't want to say anything, I am confident that what we are doing is in the best interests of this community. Now, there is some change, and some of the changes, I think, I hope our experience is similar to Nantucket's, where the zoning and real estate matters, we see a positive change, but we're not, none of us are up here trashing the attorneys of Brooks and Durensis. It's not the business that we're in, and we're hoping to retain some sort of relationship with them. And if our relationship with KP Law does not pan out again, we'll be back here in a year asking Brooks and Durensis to come on back. So this is a different model than what we have done in recent history, but I think that we have prioritized the Olin and New England Trans Rail matter as really the linchpin for how the rest of our legal representation goes. So this is not us ignoring the neighbors to Olin. This is not something that we just are being finicky about. This is something that matters to a lot, a lot of people, not just people here on this side of the table, on that side of the table, watching at home or not. This is something that matters to everybody that's living in this town, and I really feel very strongly that we're doing the best that we can to make decisions that speak best to our town's future.
Mr. Wood? Yes?
So if they hadn't presented you with the breakup, you would have gone forward and renewed them for 15th straight year?
I don't know if there would have been as many applicants. If that didn't happen. We wouldn't have put it up.
Oh, so every year you've gone through an RFP with firms before you've renewed them?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So that's what, that's my question, right? So if they didn't break up, would you have, would you have given them the business again for another, for 15th year?
They already had. They already had votes to retain them.
All right, so I have to go back to what Ms. Sullivan said. What changed so drastically for 14 straight years?
The firm did.
But you're saying you did vote, you were ready to roll ahead with them anyway before they broke up. So what has transpired in these last three months that's so critical that you would now say that you don't want them as a firm going forward?
Well, it's a different firm.
Right, so how many, how many of the attorneys that worked with Wilmington have left that firm?
I think there's 11 of the 20, I don't know that we have. No, 12.
But they worked, so 11 out of the, so all 21 worked for the town of Wilmington?
The firm, indeed, you're hiring the firm, they're employees of the, of the firm. So there were something in the order of 11 of them. I think they were predominantly labor and employment attorneys that created their own operation.
Okay. And labor is big, so did you consider that firm that they became as part of?
They did not submit a proposal.
So I guess my, my thinking here is that we've all talked tonight that Olin is absolutely critical, that the current attorney dealing with that is the best in the state, and we're going up against these two major firms. So I do, I agree with your comment, you don't want to be held over a barrel just for one thing, but this is such a huge issue that we can't take even a half step back. We can't wait for somebody to get up to speed. So I think it's just critical that you would have kept, retained them and maybe farmed out the labor, if that's what you wanted to do and take a look at it, but I wouldn't have thrown everything out for a firm that you said you've already, you would have approved if they themselves hadn't broken up. So I, I'm missing the point of what changed so drastically beyond the firm itself? And if labor's one of it, fantastic, think about it differently and go after a labor firm to come in and help you out. But I agree with everybody in here, I just don't see why you would just throw the baby out with the bathwater comment, right?
Well, you made the comment that Mr. Deutsch is the best lawyer in the state. I don't know that that's true or not, but I certainly didn't take this decision lightly. For me, it wasn't a political decision. I'm just talking in general.
Right.
I think that we did the best for the community with the firms that we had and interviewed. You know, KP has Mark Reich, who's very familiar with environmental issues, so we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I mean, we, we're not, we looked at these firms and we vetted them, and, you know, if, if Mr. Deutsch is not going to come on as a special counsel, then we'll have KP representing us. And they by far are one of the best firms in the, in the state. Now, we've reached out several times at the beginning of this process to see if, if this could happen. You heard Mr. Hall tonight, talked to Mr. Durensis several times, received emails, I got the same emails that were forwarded to me, and it was just an avoidance of what we were trying to get from Mr. Durensis. So, everybody, we, you know, this is a difficult decision for all of us, and we try to do the best we can do, and I think we have. Yes, sir. I'm not ignoring your hand, you just already spoke, I'll come back to you, okay? But you haven't spoken.
My question is, if this KP doesn't pan out, the best attorney in the state for the environmental doesn't come on board, we've wasted another year. This guy's been involved in it for 15 years or so, you're never going to get somebody up to speed in one year. If they don't pan out in the following year, we decide to go with another law firm, we've wasted another year. How long do you expect us to go on?
I'm sorry, she didn't get your name for the record?
Tony DeFryer, West Street.
Again, you said that Mr. Deutsch is the best in the state. I don't, I don't know that to be true. He's certainly the most knowledgeable of this issue because he's been involved in it for, for quite some time. But look at, you know, everybody's replaceable. And I'm not saying that he's replaceable, but I am saying that we have a talented law firm with some talented individuals that know environment law. So we're going to see how this works out. Yes, Ms., behind you.
You guys made a decision based on hope, hopes that Durensis was going to, I'm sorry, hopes that Deutsch was going to come on. You're talking 20, about 20% of the budget is from Olin, that's a huge number, and you based it on hope. I did see a little bit of the interview, and I've heard it referenced here several times, and there was some missing information. First question is, did anybody pursue the invitation to obtain that information? And the second question I have is a question, comment. Rather than basing this decision on hope, did somebody show up in the office and say, "Hey, I'm here, now I want to talk to you and find out, will you come on as special counsel for this?" Was everything done to get the answer that he would come on based on what we hope he's going to come on?
Well, I didn't base my decision on hope. I interviewed five firms and a motion was made, and that was the best selected firm. No, I'm not, not on my, not on my point of view, it wasn't.
The motion was made on hope that he was going to come on as special counsel. It was based on hope, and you guys took the vote. So once again, did anybody pursue that missing information? Because I liked where Jonathan was going with it. Did anybody go for that information? Because I might be on your side if something showed up in that information that was a little not right. I know he offered to give it under a FOIA or some type of a request, did anybody pursue that?
If you're talking about the, there was a...
Who were they talking to?
Well, let me explain the process that I went through with Paul Durensis. So as I indicated earlier in this conversation, based upon the board's direction, I communicated with Paul Durensis, Attorney Durensis, both verbally and via email, indicating that the Board of Selectmen were looking at multiple options. One was to hire one firm for everything. Another option would be to carve out the employment law and perhaps give that to another firm. Another option was to consider carving out the environmental piece and associated with NET and Olin. And so I was seeking from Attorney Durensis what the cost of their services would be if the Board of Selectmen opted to hire them for the general counsel but carved out employment law, or if they were to hire them to represent the town on Olin and NET. They responded with regard to the employment piece, they gave us a cost of $22,800. If we were to carve out, if the board was to carve out the employment piece, that would have been their monthly cost to the town. For whatever reason, I did not receive a response as to the, what they would propose charging the town for the representation on NET and Olin. I had multiple exchanges on that question. Mr. Durensis indicated there was information that he was looking for, but he never clarified for me specifically what information he was looking for. So I can't ask, I can't answer a question if I don't know what he, what someone is asking for.
How about the missing information? Did anybody pursue that? Who would they talk to do to rack up that bill? Did anybody get that? I've heard it referenced here several times.
I think he's talking about, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think what he's referring to was the bills and how they're not itemized, and there's not a lot of detail in the bill.
Exactly.
But that's a good reason not to have the detail in the bill, because it can be used in, against the town if someone does a food information request to know what council is working on, and we might not want to know what council's working on. And if I remember correctly, that was originally why we used to have all the detail in all the bills, and that's why it was changed for that reason. And so, but I agree that, as you said, Mr. Eaton, there should be at least maybe some level of detail in the bill so that the board knows what council's working on moving forward with any further. I mean, so I think that's what Rob's referring to, maybe.
I believe, when I had asked Mr. Durensis about that issue, I believe his response was that it wasn't available to him. I could be mistaken on that, for the, for the Deutsch Williams portion. Now, I could be mistaken about that, but my recollection was that he said that the Deutsch Williams billable figures are not available to him. I took that to mean not just right now, I took that to mean more, he no longer had access to it.
He didn't have access to it.
Again.
Okay, is there any further comments? Yes.
I just want to address a couple of things. I mean, Eddie, you said that you really liked Lou Ross, and, I mean, do you guys even know who your next council, town council's going to be? I mean, I thought it was understood that he was going to be your town council. I mean, I haven't heard anything that's bad about the people that are in the firm now. They're all great attorneys, they're awesome at what they do, they're some of the best in the state, and I guess that's where I'm having a problem, is understanding why take this risk right now. I hope Dan Deutsch agrees to come on, because the, all the other issues, I don't care so much about. I don't care so much about the labor attorney, I don't care so much about, you know, who the Conservation Commission might have represent them. I know you guys obviously seem super concerned about, you know, the town council position. seem super concerned about, you know, the town council position, which you should because they work for you also, but I'm really concerned about the environmental stuff, and I will personally reach out to Dan Deutsch and ask him to please, and Durensis is going to please stay on in that capacity because the town needs us, but quite frankly, if they don't do it, I can totally understand why they wouldn't want to do it, but I want to beg for them to stay, because we need them, and I think that you're taking a huge risk, and you act like it's some kind of like little personal town council experiment, well, we'll see how things work out, other councils are pretty good, they're not, it's not the same.
I don't think it's an experiment.
That's how it sounds like to me, like it's some kind of experiment, and a lot of attorneys are good attorneys, and there's a lot of good environmental attorneys, I never said Dan Deutsch was the best in the state, I said he's known as one of the best in the state, and he works for us, and he's worked for us for fifteen years, if it wasn't for Deutsch and Durensis, we wouldn't have a tolling agreement on the contamination from the Olin site, we didn't have that moving forward, so the town wouldn't even have to have the option of whether to go after Olin, because we didn't have it if it wasn't for Deutsch and Durensis back in 2003, and, you know, so they've done a good job for the town, I don't, and I still haven't heard any reason why to get rid of them, but that's up to you guys, they're your town council, you're the ones that will have communications with them, not me, I get that, but you're leaving an asset at risk with the Olin and the Olin Transrail site, and I will personally reach out to Dan Deutsch and to Durensis and ask them to please stay on, and not to take it too personally what they've had to put up from this board.
Well, let me just take exception to that if I could, you know, the fact of the matter is that three months ago in March, we were told, and granted, they exercise the right that they have, but, you know, after fourteen years or whatever, all of a sudden I get this call that the firm is breaking up, so here we are, as you say, in all of these different cases, Olin is one of the biggest ones, and I've, you know, confronted with this issue that within, I think it was a month or whatever the timeframe, it was a very short timeframe, they're dissolving, that, how is that helpful to the town? You know, there's this inference that we're being highly critical of Durensis and company, and that we're punishing them, it was certainly no cakewalk for me to go through the process in the midst of a budget of dropping what I'm doing to get this RFP out so that we can go through and select council, so I don't consider it a benefit to us that they decided because they, whatever their issues were, that they could no longer serve as a firm collectively, it was a major inconvenience, and I said that in conversations with some of them, that it was probably the worst timing that they could have picked, you know, do it in September or whatever, but in March? So that was no, they weren't helping us out by that, they were not helping us out by that, and, you know, certainly they probably had some issues that I will never be aware of as to why they had to do that, but it was, it was no great help to me and the department heads who have ongoing legal issues that we're scrambling to figure out who's going to cover.
And let me make it clear that this is not an experimental choosing, this is choosing the right firm and a firm that will represent us well. Yeah, Mr. Bendel?
If I could, just a couple of things, I agree that certainly that there were some positives from the previous firm, one of them being Mr. Foskett, who I don't think has been mentioned tonight, he was our town council, he's no longer with the current firm that interviewed of one of the five for the new position, and secondly, if I could just, just take this moment to just say that I totally resent the fact that, or the notion that for any reason I'm up here for political gain, okay? I grew up in this community like many of you, my wife grew up in this community like many of you, we married, we worked really hard to stay in this community and buy a home, we're now raising our daughter, and the reasons I make the decisions up here are from my family and the families in this community, which I love so much, and every time I do that, I couldn't care less about elections, I'm not running for higher office, I'm a school teacher who's volunteering this time, and quite frankly, to be frank, I'm surprised to hear from a former select person who sat up here and recognizes that there are difficult decisions to be made, and when you sign up to do this, you have to make difficult decisions that aren't going to sit well with some, but at the end of the night, you can sleep well knowing you did what you thought was best, there is no political gain, and you can take that to the bank. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Kevin McDonald, Wilmington, Mass.
Where does he live in Wilmington? Don't you gotta name the address? Why are you letting him speak if he's not going to?
Maybe because people throw trash on my driveway and other things, Mr. Loud, all right?
Everyone else is giving their name and address.
Yeah, my name is, in plenty of records down at the town hall.
Okay.
Wait, no, we, that's fine.
With regard to the attorneys, I find it hard to believe that the limited amount of attorneys that came before the town to interview for the job are the only attorneys in our state that could handle the town's business.
And I'm just wondering why there's such a rush to hire an attorney tonight, and why there's no other firms that you're reaching out to, so that's one question. The other concern I have is, I've heard that the firm that has been representing us has had sort of a joint venture with the other firm that you're hiring, and so the question that I have is, could that, could that sometimes somehow invalidate proper bidding? I mean, we got, we got firms that there could be a conflict of interest with, we have one firm that an attorney, now he left the firm that he started, they represent all of these towns in Massachusetts, and they're making all of that money, and he's just going to leave that firm? He was the head of the firm? I just, I don't know why you're rushing to hire a firm tonight instead of reaching out to other firms, that's all. And the other thing I was going to ask you is, I guess this question through you, Mr. Chairman, is from Mr. Eaton, Mr. Eaton, you campaigned about one of the particular issues that we had talked about at a meeting maybe like a month ago, and you said that not having a handicap accessible bathroom at the senior center is unacceptable, and I agree, so in the last month or month and a half, whatever it was, what have you done to fix that problem? And the seniors that might want to go down there, that are not going down there, maybe staying at home, being lonely because of that, does that, is this going to continue? Was that just a, an empty campaign promise or empty campaign pledge?
I'll respond to that, so earlier tonight we had Terry Marciello and Ms. Pickett come and talk about some of the programming that they were offering, and also some of the space constraints that they have, including the usage of the Fourth of July building, so whether or not the solution to that is a new senior center or making physical adjustments to the bathroom as is, is something that isn't going to happen overnight, you had suggested a month ago that I make a motion during new business to fix the bathroom, and I don't think that that would be the proper process to do so, first is really getting the problem to be kind of publicized so people are aware of the issue of the bathroom that's not handicap accessible, and then getting the different, the town manager and the different department heads that are affected together to try and solve that issue, it's a bathroom, Mr. McDonald, and I understand that it...
It's a bathroom, it's on your campaign, and also you've put around town, so is it impossible to make that a handicap bathroom, and why, why would you campaign on that if it can't be done?
I think the next step is that we need to be having Mr. Hooper and Ms. Marciello in together to talk about that issue, and that is something that is certainly not something I'm going to be letting go by the wayside, so this is, I'm very well aware of the campaign promises and the issues that are important to me, and that is certainly one of them. I think having Ms. Marciello in here tonight to talk about some of the space constraints is a part of the process of educating people about the different types of programs that they have, and the remarkable success with the 24% increase in foot traffic and participation in their programs just in the past year, which really just exacerbates that problem of the bathroom that's not handicap accessible, so, again, I appreciate your comments because it's an issue that needs to be addressed, but it's not something that we just kind of flick a pen and it's fixed, it's something that needs to be discussed, because again, I'm not a plumber, I'm not a contractor.
Mr. McDonald, can you say something? I was down talking to someone who goes into the senior center, and I asked him that question, because that was a good point you brought up a couple of meetings ago, if there was a handicapped accessible bathroom, and the person who I talked to said, yes, there was, so, maybe there's conflicting issues, we'll have to talk to Terry Marciello and find out, because I was told by a pretty reliable person that when she used the bathroom, it was handicap accessible.
Okay, I was relying on a pretty, well, a person I thought was pretty reliable, Mr. Eaton, and his campaign material simply said, a senior center that does not have a handicap accessible bathroom is not acceptable, so I was taking it right from Mr. Eaton's publicized campaign literature.
Okay.
Okay? And so, would you put that as an agenda item next meeting to discuss it?
Well, I'll have to tell me, I had to check to make sure that there is bathrooms that is handicap accessible, but the person I talked to said that there was, so that's all I can go by.
Okay, the last thing I just wanted to mention was, a couple of months ago I was over at Demming Way, and I noticed there were many vacant units over there, and Mr. Bendel was, I think, going to take the lead on seeing what was going on with getting veterans into those vacant units in a quicker way, I was just wondering what's going on with that, Mr. Bendel.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, I can assure you that our Veterans Agent, Lucy Maglia, is in constant contact with Maureen Hickey, who's the director over there, and I find it hard to believe that there's many vacancies over there, considering that the list, the last time it was open for residents was hundreds of people long, and I can assure you that the good folks over at Demming Way are doing everything they can to make sure that those who are deserving...
Do we have vacant units right now?
I don't know, I'm...
Well, you were supposed to be taking the lead on that, shouldn't you know that?
There's a lot of things I should know, I wish I did, but I don't know everything.
I hope we have that as an agenda item next meeting.
Sure.
You can report how many vacant units we have, how long they've been vacant, and why homeless veterans are not in there. Could we have that as an agenda item? Would you make that as a motion tonight?
No, we don't need that as an agenda item, but you can certainly...
I'm advising you right now.
I took it under advisement, thank you.
No, we can get the information, but...
We'll get the information for you for the next meeting, okay? Is there anyone else under public comments? All right, new business, anyone we should speak on the new business? Yes, Mr. Loud?
I'm gladly, this is my favorite part of the night, because I get to shout out about a veteran, something that I brought to the board a while ago, we've got the moving wall, the Vietnam Wall coming to Wilmington again, July 26th through July 30th, I personally can't wait to get on there again, but I also want to mention the town of Wilmington lost four young men during the Vietnam conflict, that was one of the main reasons the town of Wilmington hosted the Vietnam Moving Wall in 2008, and it will be hosting the wall again this July 26th through the 30th. We would like to invite all Wilmington residents to the wall during this time in Wilmington in peace respects of the Wilmington's following, and I'm going to mention their names, Richard W. Welch was killed in action on 9/13/1968, John A. Rich was killed in action on 8/25/1966, Robert W. Parent killed in action on 7/21/1968, and John J. Fulton killed in action on 1/31/1968. May they all rest in peace and thank them for their service, and I look forward to seeing many, many residents hopefully down at the wall at the end of July. Thank you.
Just briefly circling back on a topic that was given a little bit of discussion, our Assistant Town Manager, Dee Casey, was part of a group of the Mass Municipal Association, and she, and that group put together the Local Government Workforce Skills Gap Report, it highlights the difficulty that municipalities are having statewide in attracting financial professionals with the sands of the hourglass running low on how much longer Town Accountant Mike Morris will be an employee, and certainly, we have another difficult decision ahead of us, and I found her report, it's going to be a difficult decision, because a lot of people are in the accounting profession are turning towards private industry and private firms rather than municipal work, so we have a work cut out for us.
I just want to wish everybody happy on the Fourth, and I may and may not tell everybody where I'm going to be on the Fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I too am looking forward to the Fourth of July festivities, I would encourage all residents to take advantage, it's certainly one of the best weeks of the year here in the community, and lastly, I just want to thank and acknowledge and send well wishes to a terrific volunteer in our community, Ms. Margaret Kane, I thank her for her service on, time on the school committee, and want to send her some well wishes. Thank you.
I would agree with everybody's comments, and have a great summer vacation for the kids who are no longer in school for a little bit, a while, and then they'll be back, but happy Fourth of July, but it's worth mentioning once again, the family of Irene Brennan who generously gave $53,000 for the scholarship fund on the behalf of the students at Wilmington High School, so enjoy the Fourth of July, be safe, Mr. Hull, important dates.
Important dates, June 29th through July 2nd are the Fourth of July festivities, you can contact the Fourth of July, 978-657-8081, or funonthe4th.com, the spectacular fireworks are July 2nd, Family Day is June 30th, Town Common, also on June 30th Wilmington Fire Department versus Wilmington Police Department, charity softball game to benefit Wilmington Food Pantry, also would just note it's, and that's at 4:00 PM Wilmington High School Baseball Field, town offices will be closed July 4th, July 7th the library closes Saturdays for the summer, July 9th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, July 11th is Concerts on the Common, Jimmy and the Jesters, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM, also July 11th Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 8 AM to 2:00 PM, July 12th Commission on Disabilities Emergency Preparedness, Town Hall Auditorium, 10:30 AM to noon time, that's been rescheduled to September 12th, so it's, was scheduled for July 12th, now September 12th, July 14th Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 9 AM to 4:00 PM, July 18th Concerts on the Common, Peaking in the Mystics, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM, July 25th Concerts on the Common, Perfect Crime, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM, and then as was noted a few minutes ago, July 26th through the 30th is the Moving Wall Town Common.
Lieutenant, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made, second, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you very much, good night.